Lord Provost, members of the council, before the beginning of the formal business this evening, please may I read out the usual introductions. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council and its committees, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the meeting chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves it. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the meeting chat. The chair will then invite you to speak. Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the chair will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the meeting chat. Otherwise, the item will be agreed. Please do not use the meeting chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the meeting chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and the committees, and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? No queries have been indicated, Lord Provost, so I shall now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute.
Sorry, Lord Provost. Councillor Alexander.
I'm here.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell.
I'm here.
Councillor Cadell.
Here.
Councillor Dawson.
Yeah.
Councillor Flynn.
Present.
Councillor Hunter.
Here.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Councillor Rendall.
I'm here.
Bailey Roberts.
I'm here.
Councillor Rome.
I'm here.
Councillor Ross.
I'm here.
Bailey Sawyers.
I'm here.
Councillor Short.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
Continuing on, all I've done is pass it on.
Councillor Smith.
Councillor Smith sends her apologies.
Thank you. Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Crookshank.
Present.
Councillor McCready.
Present.
Councillor McIrvin.
Present.
Councillor Malone.
Present.
Councillor Mara.
Present.
Councillor Richardson.
Present.
Bailey Wright.
Present.
Bailey Scott.
Here.
Councillor Hay.
Present.
Councillor Scott.
I'm here.
Bailey McPherson.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
And Councillor Murray. Councillor Murray. I'm like, Councillor Murray absent for the moment. Thank you.
Lord Provost, members of the council, there are four items of business this evening. Firstly, the minutes for information and record purposes.
Agreed.
The minutes being agreed, we move to general business. Item one, vacancies outside bodies. The council's instructions are requested regarding vacancies on TACTran, Central Waterfront Partnership, Cosler Board Environment and Economy, Dundee Partnership Forum, Scottish Council Committee on Radioactive Substances and Dundee City Sports Association for the Disabled. Please note that Business Loan Scotland has been withdrawn.
Nominations.
Councillor Dawson wishes to speak, Lord Provost.
I'm here.
Councillor Dawson.
May.
Councillor Dawson. These vacancies fall to be filled by the administration group, so can I suggest, Lord Provost, that Councillor Dawson sends them to me and I'll intimit them to the members of the committee following the meeting?
Well, that would don't have to ask.
Is that agreeable, Lord Provost?
Agreed.
Item two, vacancies, local review body and licensing board. Again, these vacancies fall to be filled by the administration group. Please can I make the same suggestion as the previous item, Lord Provost?
Agreed.
The final item, best value assurance report. You have a report before you.
Councillor Alexander. Thank you very much, Lord Provost, and good evening, colleagues. Yeah, I'll just take a moment to talk to the report before us in terms of the best value assurance report. Can I start by thanking elected members but also partners from across the city for their contributions and participation in the exercise in terms of that best value audit. It was an extensive exercise and I think has been a very worthwhile one for us as well in terms of giving us some constructive feedback and also some positive feedback on the work that we've been undertaking over the last few years. The report itself was obviously including a series of recommendations but also some recognition of the work that we've, as I say, undertaken over the last ten years. And the tagline of the report, a decade of improvement, is something that I think we should all be very proud of. That's not to say that the city doesn't continue to face some big challenges, particularly the compounding effect of COVID-19 and the challenges that we now face as a result of that as well. But I'm very proud of the work that's been delivered over those last ten years, in fact, and hopefully members will see the positive elements of that report and how we are seeking to take forward the recommendations. We've had the opportunity to discuss this report more fully with Audit Scotland as well, and I really value the opportunity to have that dialogue with them. And we have Fiona Mitchell Knight on the call this evening, and thank you for her coming along today. Fiona, of course, is Audit Director at Audit Scotland, and I'll perhaps ask her to add her comments in a moment. But I really just want to, as I say, recognise some of the detail within this report, because I think it's worth also commending the contribution of the officers in bringing this to fruition and their contribution to it, particularly the exercise that was undertaken in advance of the full audit. The results of that and the feedback that we've received from Audit Scotland are that we are both an honest council but also a very mature council that recognises the scale of those challenges, but also recognises what we can be doing to try and mitigate some of the impacts upon vulnerable members of our community as well. The council's delivered sound financial management, it has effective leadership, and that's across the board and including, I think that's a comment also on the leadership of the broader city and some of those partner organisations. And there has also been a steady pace of improvement. I think we all recognise that there are particular areas and particular challenges where we want to see the pace of change increase, and I think that's acknowledged throughout the report as well. But I just, again, want to finish by thanking everybody and thanking Audit Scotland, especially Fiona for coming along to the meeting this evening. Lord Provost, with your permission, can I perhaps invite Fiona Mitchell Knight to provide some comment on the report?
Thank you, Lord Provost. Thank you, leader. And I'd just really like to endorse the comments of the leader there. And I've been the appointed auditor for the council for four years now, and during that time we've been pulling together evidence and reporting on the effectiveness of the council's arrangements for demonstrating best value. And this best value assurance report pulls all that evidence together, and it was supplemented with fieldwork, analysis of service performance and interviews with officers, councillors and partner organisations. Of course, the COVID-19 pandemic had an impact on the council, but we were pleased to see that the council were keen to continue with the audit. And with refocus of the approach, we were able to conclude the best value assurance report. So all credit to everybody in the council that that was the case. I'd like to praise the council for its support for the audit and openness in welcoming the challenge that this audit brings. And we've seen throughout the audit and throughout my years with the council that the council very much welcomes opportunities to learn how it can improve. And so we were able to conclude our work and report the report which you've seen today. And so the Controller of Audit reported this report to the Accounts Commission in September. They considered the report and they added the findings which you see at the front of the report. As the leader says, there's some very good news in the report. We report on the clear focus on continuous improvement across council and a steady pace of improvement that was evidenced since the last best value report in 2010. We comment on the very clear and ambitious vision that you have for the area of Dundee along with your partners and the effective leadership that drives that on. We comment on some of the council services improving and we talk about some real examples of regeneration of the city and the waterfront. However, as you recognise yourself, there are some deep-rooted challenges in Dundee in addressing poverty and inequality. And the council acknowledges itself that the pace of improvement needs to improve if you're going to achieve the aspirations and ambitious vision for the city in improving on those areas. I'm really pleased to see you considering the report today and the positive response in accepting the findings and in producing an action plan to address the recommendations in the report. And we'll be watching how the council monitors its improvement against its action plan and will be reporting it in future audits. Of course, we're very mindful that many of the challenges that you face cannot be addressed alone. And I'm also the auditor of NHS Tayside and Dundee City IJB, so we very much appreciate it. Needs to be a partnership effort in being able to move ahead with improvement in some of those areas. And so we appreciate the context you're in. We also recognise that dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic are not something that's going to be resolved overnight and we'll be monitoring your recovery in response to that as part of the annual audit. But we'll also be mindful and respectful of the impact that that has on your improvement action plans. And as I say, we will be reporting on your progress throughout the rest of our audit appointment. So thank you very much for the opportunity to address the council today. Thank you very much, Lord Provost.
Questions? Any questions or? Any member wishes to raise?
Lord Provost. I was hoping to make a comment.
Yes. Carry on, Bailey.
Well, thank you. Lord Provost, I think the report in general was a fairly good and a positive report for the city. It does, of course, highlight some of the issues that we knew were out there. And it obviously suggests that we need to accelerate measures to address these, and I think there is a willingness on councillors to do that. I think that I would like to see that proposal coming forward fairly strongly as soon as possible to address inequalities and poverty within the city. I suppose when I look at the action plan that council has put together, I was a little bit disappointed from the point of view of, you know, it says that we will communicate better policies with council, with our citizens. Yet if I was reading that as an ordinary citizen, I think it would be very difficult to understand the measures of what council intend putting in place to address the best value review. So I think that we need to start there in some way and make sure that things in the future are a bit clearer so as that people can clearly understand what we're trying to do and how best we take individuals forward with us as we try to address the issues that face the city. You know, I think that policies off the, it's not about doing things to people, it's about taking people with way and making sure that the policies are in place that they understand. But suggesting that we'll have regular reports going to, you know, partners really doesn't really tell individuals the difference that we're making for them. So I think that it's something that we need to address going forward. Leave it at that, Lord Provost. Thank you.
Thank you. Bailey McPherson.
Lord.
Thanks, Lord Provost. Like colleagues, I feel that there's a lot of positive in the commission's findings, and I'm very grateful to Fiona Mitchell Knight for her contribution this evening and indeed for the very useful meeting that group leaders, chief officers had with commission members recently. I want to highlight one particular area that the commission, in fact, highlights itself in point four of the commission findings. And that is about the financial sustainability of the Integration Joint Board. And I note that there is a commitment in, on page sixty-six of the substantive papers, nine point four of the improvement plan, to continue to work with NHS Tayside and IJB to explore every opportunity to improve the financial sustainability of the Health and Social Care Partnership. I think the point I would make, and I have a question for officers perhaps to the chief executive. The financial sustainability of the IJB is not just vital in terms of the highly important services that the IJB is responsible for, but for the impact it has on both our finances as the local authority and indeed that of NHS Tayside. Now, I am grateful for the commitment that the council will continue to work with our partners with regard to the financial sustainability of the IJB. But as the commission itself rightly points out, this has been, this problem, this financial issue has been exacerbated by the pressures arising of the COVID-19 health emergency. And I'd be grateful of officers and perhaps the chief executive could give an indication as to how often this authority will be updated on progress with regards to ensuring long-term financial sustainability for the IJB, because we have this continuing recurring issue of the financial challenges facing the Health and Social Care Partnership. And I think in the long term, in the medium to long term, we really want to get this onto a level footing where there is not a negative, potential negative impact on Dundee City Council and therefore the other vital services that the council is responsible for.
Thank you. So, Lord Provost, it's David Martin here just to address the points raised by. So first of all, thank you for that comment, Bailey McPherson. I think that it's been five years since the IGBs were formally established, and there are two other papers on the agenda tonight. I'm sure we can develop your points on one about the report on the financial position of the council, including the IGB and also the review of the integration scheme. But I think the points you make about ensuring that the financial sustainable viability of the IGB is at the heart of good governance and about trying to deliver health and social care improvements for the city is one that is well made. So your point about bringing regular reports back to the Parks and Resources Committee and to other committees of the council is what merits it. But we will ensure that the progress in finance is actually picked up through the regular revenue monitoring. And also, as you know, we've made a commitment and Vicky Irons, the chief officer, is happy to do that also, to come back to the city council on a broad-based report at least twice a year. So I think if that was something that gave elected members the opportunity to see progress, I would certainly support and welcome that. And in addition to that, of course, there will be specific examples of high-profile services that the IGB is responsible for, the Dundee Drugs Action Plan, the Integrated Mental Health Strategy for Tayside, which will bring specific thematic reports on, and the financial implications of those reports will also be clearly laid out for elected members to scrutinise. So I think if you put that suite of reporting together, it should make sure that elected members can scrutinise the financial sustainability of the IGB thoroughly.
And could I thank Mr Martin for his response? That is reassuring. I think we've all had concerns about the financial sustainability of the Health and Social Care Partnership. It's an ongoing issue and clearly exacerbated by the health emergency. I think it's vitally important that we keep an extremely close eye on this, so I'm grateful to Mr Martin for the response that he's given.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Lord Provost, Bailey Scott and Councillor Mara wish to speak.
Right. Councillor.
Bailey Scott.
Thanks, Lord Provost. I just wanted to say that I was pleased to have been interviewed by the Controller of Audit for the best value review. And I think that the comments that I made chime with what others have said, because it comes through in the report, particularly in respect of there being good collaborative work between all elected members and that there's a focus on working for the interests of the city. So that's a real positive to come out of the report. And I also welcome the improvement plan that's been prepared and the relative early timescales are being put down to carry out some of the actions. But the commission repeat the call for the council to increase the pace of change and the need to move from incremental change to transformational change across all services, and it particularly highlights education. Now, given that we were already faced pre-COVID with a projected funding gap of thirty-two million over the next two financial years, goodness knows what that funding gap's going to be like post-COVID. So we really need to be able to carry out the transformational change that's required, especially in education for our young people. I think that that transformational change needs to be supported by a sufficient settlement from the Scottish government. So hopefully our budget position will be able to support that transformational change next year. Thank you.
Councillor Murray.
Thank you, Lord Provost. I wanted to cover some of the issues that colleagues have already mentioned, I think, in terms of the the big issues of pace of change and I think two particular areas in the drugs, death issues and also the mental health services. And I think these come up again and again in reports that we're going to look at tonight. But I have a specific question relating to one of the recommendations of the, for the chief executive. I really welcome recommendation number one that the auditor has put in place, which talks about extending the support provided to non-elected committee members. I think what we've had in the council over the last few months is a series of attacks on some of the people who sit on our Children and Families Committee, the right to sit there. And I think it's really good to see the council endorsing extra support for those people, telling them that they're valued, saying that their contribution is very important. And I want to say that it's been clear throughout that the leaders of the different political groups have certainly been supportive of those individuals and the contribution they do, give to serve our community. I did, though, reading the sections around it, feel that that starts on a position of respect. And a recurring issue that I have fed back to me from those non-elected members is that they are concerned that issues pertaining to education have, over the last couple of years, continually been put into other committees. So we have a schedule of responsibilities for the Children and Families Committee. But unfortunately, things, if we go back to things like faculties, these policy decisions have been taken out with that committee. So I'm really looking for an assurance from the chief executive that we can make sure that the standing orders are abided by, that we start from a position of respect for these members, that this is a good restart, given them the respect they deserve. But it's really important that the issues that pertaining to our schools and our education are addressed in the Children and Families Committee and not elsewhere. So just an assurance on that from the chief executive and perhaps the leader of the council would be welcome.
Thanks, convenor. Lord Provost, forgive me. I think that the comment I would make is that the standing orders for the council and the terms of reference for committees are clear and are, I think, regularly reviewed and approved by elected members. And I would certainly assure all elected members that those are fully respected in terms of bringing reports forward to councillors for decision-making and occasionally for noting.
Other questions? Any more?
There are no other members indicating they wish to speak, Lord Provost. And that concludes the business, Lord Provost. The next committee is the Community Safety and Public Protection Committee.
Okay, welcome to the committee. Mr Wardle, do you want to get us underway?
Yes, thanks very much, convenor. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest? And there being no declarations, it takes you on to item two, which is the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service Quarterly Performance Report, which is before you.
Okay, I think Mr Smart will be taking us through this one tonight in your own time. Okay, thank you very much, Mr Cadell and everyone. Just before I ask members to note and scrutinise and take any questions from the quarterly report, there's a few areas I'd like to comment on to offer further details. So if you look at page eleven of the report, we have our performance summary. And you can see there yourselves, of the twelve key indicators identified, eight are currently sitting positive and below the headline indicator target for the year. The other four areas, and in particular focus on accidental dwelling fires, fire fatalities, non-domestic building fires and deliberate primary fires are sitting at red and are ten percent above target. Some of the performance areas are particularly pleasing with significant reductions in road traffic collisions and also RTC non-fatal casualties against the average for the quarter. Turning on to page thirteen, we've tragically experienced, tragically experienced another fire fatality for this quarter, which brings us to two unfortunately for the current reporting year. Our optimal aim is obviously to strive to have zero fire fatalities. And there's quite a lot of work going on behind the scenes to obviously have a look into the cause of these fires in particular and more importantly, what we can do about reducing them moving forward. Non-fatal fire fatalities, however, are down significantly for the year to date. Page nineteen again, just briefly on RTCs, again, down for the quarter with a significant reduction in related casualties as well. Moving on into home fire safety visits, along with so many other areas of business, obviously COVID has had a significant impact on our ability to conduct as many visits as what we would normally do. However, we have focused at the very high and high members of the community in terms of continuing our face-to-face visits and also undertaking a lot of telephone consultations as well for other areas. In terms of unwanted fire alarm signals, again, just on page twenty-three of the report, we've got an improving picture yet again in Dundee, which is extremely pleasing. And this is done through positive multi-agency working and is a significant ongoing tread. and is a significant ongoing trend in reducing these calls. And some of local work being done in partnership with building owners is also being recognised as best practice nationally within the service. So with that in mind, over to yourselves if anyone has any particular questions or any other information that I can provide for you.
Thank you for that, Graham. There are a few people waiting, and before I bring them in, I just wonder if you could elaborate a little bit there on the community engagement side of the forces work during this obviously difficult period because it's vital work and I just wonder if you're able to elaborate on how you've been able to go about that during this period.
Yeah, okay, thanks for the question. And again, I think, you know, it won't come as any surprise to anybody at all. Obviously, it has been a challenge, especially earlier in the year when we were in full lockdown. But obviously, just, you know, in terms of the use of technology, we're still able to communicate with obviously our partners. And perhaps a recent example that I would maybe provide is some of the excellent work that was carried out from a multi-agency context in the run-up to Bonfire Night. There was a particular focus, again, obviously, it was well recognised that most local authority areas did not have any official displays, Dundee being no different. And obviously, we were interested to see, well, what level of activity would actually come out. So in the run-up to Bonfire Night, because obviously I think everyone is aware as well that it's not just on that particular evening, it's usually in the run-up to it and also in the days after that. So there has been some really, really good work that had gone on there to reduce the number of calls that we attend in terms of deliberate secondary fires.
Thank you. Thank you, Graham. I'm going to open it to the floor. We have Bailey Wright, Bailey McPherson, councillor Malone and Bailey Keenan in that order. Bailey Wright?
Okay, thank you, convener. I'm looking at pages 11 and 12, and I was a bit concerned when I saw the increase in accidental dwelling fires, non-domestic fires and deliberately placed primary fires. They're all up. I was just wondering if there was any specific reason for it or did COVID have a reason? Was that a reason perhaps more house fires? On page 29, I was glad to see the visits to the schools to speak on fire safety where it was happening. But maybe you could tell us a little more about the fire-related antisocial group meetings which are ongoing? Thank you.
Thank you very much. So your first question in relation to obviously the increase in fires experienced. So yeah, it is an interesting point that you make with that. And I think, again, without stating the obvious, but, you know, we have to bear in mind that obviously, especially when we went into lockdown, you know, the guidelines where everybody stay at home as much as obviously you possibly can, including work. So as a result of that, you know, people are spending so much more time at home and perhaps using a lot more devices in terms of technology, especially in relation to doing their work. So that is one of the areas where we have seen an increase in house fires. And tragically, as I've already highlighted, we have obviously had a fatality again during the second quarter. So there absolutely is a connection there in terms of COVID having an effect on the increase in fires with that. Moving on to your other point in relation to page 29, I think you mentioned there, again, just in terms of some of the antisocial meetings that have gone on. So again, another good example was in the run-up, as I mentioned, to Bonfire Night. Let's say there was a lot of some excellent work that was undertaken there with intelligence that came across from a lot of multi-agency partners. And we managed to avoid some particular issues that were on the radar for that night. And again, it was a mixture of, you know, taking into account obviously all the COVID measures, but if there were any face-to-face meetings carried out, you know, like I say, obviously, all that, that was all done within the restricted guidelines, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, convener. And just following on from the question from Bailey Wright. And could I first of all make a very positive comment? That the progress on unwanted fire alarm signals, which is something I've raised a number of times in the past, I think is very welcome. So very grateful for that information. That's very, very good progress. My question was in relation to the increasing level of fires, perhaps less to do with accidental things like accidental house fires. And I can understand that in relation to more people being in a domestic setting 24/7 really. I can understand that. But my concern really that I wanted to highlight and ask a question about is on page 26. And that's around the 22 deliberate primary fires in quarter two, which, as the report notes, is a very significant increase of 83%. And the report alludes to some examples being vehicle fires and a mixture of non-residential and dwelling fires. I was just really wondering, is there a specific pattern in these? And is there any reactive work that can be done to perhaps tackle this? Because an 83% increase frankly is really rather concerning, to be perfectly frank. We all understand, I think, that we're living in very unusual times at present. But how much of these deliberate fires are in any way health emergency and the situation we find ourselves in related, or are there other factors?
Thanks very much for your comments, obviously, in relation to unwanted fire alarm signals. But yes, just in relation to your question there on page 26. So again, we had quite a bit of focus, especially as we're coming out of spring and in towards the summer months. And this was really in relation to deliberate fire setting. And, you know, pardon the pun, but obviously we do have some of the classic hotspots which have been commented on before in terms of derelict buildings, buildings that are currently unoccupied, not necessarily classed as derelict. But again, it does cause issues with that. So a good example, and again, for maybe, I can't actually recall if we mentioned it during the last meeting, but we had a particular focus on the House of Gray earlier this year, again, just leading into the summer. Now, you'll be aware that obviously, there have been, a lot of applications have gone in in terms of further development of this building. But we were particularly concerned, I think, with some of new housing in the vicinity. Not that it was actually proven that that was where the root of it was coming, but there was a lot of interest on that particular building. So we had some really, really good work that went on at that time. And I'm really pleased to report that we had no fires there over the summer. But we were particularly focusing on that as seen as a bit of a magnet, you know, in particular like Strathmark Hospital.
Okay, I'm grateful for that reply. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Malone didn't wish to comment on this, so we move on to Bailey Keenan.
Convener, it's probably a question and a comment that perhaps you and Mr Smart can share the response. It's in relation to home fire safety. I think you're looking at that the Scottish government made a real mess of bringing in a piece of legislation, but no managing to tell anybody they've done it in relation to smoke alarms and heat detection that should have been in homes, I think, by October this year. They've moved that sort of start date for that or completion date for that. So I'm just wondering what we're thinking of doing by way of promotion of that, given that the Scottish government made a mess out of the last time. My real concern would be that, you know, fire is a tragedy in any home and many things would be lost that are irreplaceable. The sort of photographs of children from years ago that you couldn't possibly replace or the treasured memory that's lost forever because of damage. And it would be compounded should we be in a position that, you know, we'll have a bit of legislation nobody knew, but the insurance companies turn around and say, we ain't going to pay because you weren't complying with current legislation. So, you know, what's our duty and how are we going to promote that? Are we prepared to write to the government and suggest that they make an advertising campaign? I mean, is there a bit of funding that could be coming forward that would help people in a bit of poverty make a difference and be able to install these things? So what's our response to that? And I'd welcome the comments from Mr Smart as well.
Well, certainly from my position, Bailey Keenan, education will always be key in these matters going forward and taking the communities with us as well is absolutely vital. I think I would bring in maybe Ms Berlin if she had any comments on that professional side of it. And Graham can come in after that if he wishes.
Thank you very much, convener. First of all, what I'd like to do is reassure elected members that in relation to the council housing programme, in relation to smoke detectors, we are still aiming to complete that programme by February 2021. So we're still on track for doing that. In terms of the wider communication, certainly through the private sector services team and other communication measures, we endeavour to make sure that people are fully aware of any support that they might be able to get, but also what their requirements would be in terms of the legislation going forward. So there is quite a range of different work that we can do to publicise and get that message across in terms of safety.
And working hand in hand with our partners as well, Eileen. Thank you.
Absolutely, convener, and also through our communities' teams as well.
Thank you. I don't know if you wanted to come in on that further, Graham?
No, and thanks very much for your question. And it's a valid question, obviously, in terms of the concerns, obviously, that were currently out there. And then obviously, the agreement made to delay it. I'm not in a position to obviously comment on how that was actually communicated against. But I mean, obviously, at the end of the day, you know, in terms of an organisation, we, you know, include all of that in our prevention agenda. And again, I completely and utterly support your comment there about, obviously, in terms of the tragic outcomes of what happens when unfortunately people do have fires in their homes. You know, and it's not just about, obviously, the building structure itself. It's the items that can't be replaced. So it's of huge importance and obviously we want to ensure that we make our local communities as safe as we possibly can.
Convener, I mean, I welcome these comments that have been made. And I wonder if it's worth having the chief executive write to the minister and asked for some assistance, given that, you know, it's a campaign that we need to put into place because we now know about it. And it is obviously worthwhile seeking some kind of funding as well, given that, you know, there might be few people that are cash strapped and we'd find that difficult.
I certainly have no issues with writing to anyone to help this council deliver on its requirements, Bailey Keenan. But if you want the chief executive to comment on that?
Happy if he just takes on board a write. Thanks.
Thank you.
Happy to take your instructions, convener.
Yep, well, thank you. We'll get something sorted. So councillor Mara?
Apologies, convener. I was having trouble unmuting myself there. I just wanted to thank Mr Smart for his comments regarding the House of Gray and the work that officers did to support the community and that. I've been working with and I've spoken to the Police Scotland colleagues for the Locky Ward on a number of occasions regarding youths in particular accessing that building, a large derelict building. And so I wanted to thank you for your work in that. It's a matter of ongoing concern to the community in the Western Gateway. We have been doing work with Springfield, the developers, to try and put in other forms of options for young people to access a football pitch, for instance, for distraction. And it's by no means saying that it's children from the local area, young people from the local area that are accessing it. It's not clear, but what we do know is that there have been issues arising from that. My question actually was, given the context that you've provided, was to officers of the council as to what is being done to try and get a long-term solution to this problem in terms of developing that site. Because not only is it a fire risk, but there's ongoing issues of antisocial behaviour around it that my constituents are concerned about. So it would be good to know what is being done and if we can put a bit of extra effort, if possible, into getting a longer term development solution for that site.
Okay, thank you for those comments, councillor Mara.
Sorry, it was a question, if that's okay, convener. Maybe I didn't make that clear. I was looking for a response from officers, perhaps city development colleagues, if there's somebody here. I think that this is an opportunity for us to address the kind of holistic issue and see if perhaps a meeting can be pulled together to see where the next steps might be to develop the site. So I don't know if Mr Presswood or Mr Hamilton's available or the chief executive.
I think Mr Presswood may be on the call.
I am. Yeah, I'm more than happy to pick that up and come back to members with a briefing note. I know that the planners are speaking very regularly to the developer, but I don't know the current position. So I'll come back with a briefing note. And if the meeting would be beneficial, more than happy to facilitate that.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor Mara. Well, I see no further questions on that report. If we agree that, Mr Waddell?
Thank you very much, convener. Item three, Scottish Fire and Rescue Service Dundee Local Plan, which is submitted for approval.
Okay, Mr Smart, do you wish to address this?
Yes, thanks very much, Mr Cordell. Just briefly, again, just to give you an overview in terms of how we got to this stage. So again, obviously, under the Fire Scotland Act 2005, we are required to obviously generate a local fire plan for local authorities. And this obviously includes Dundee. This will be the third fire plan since the introduction of the single service for Scotland, with the first one being published in April 2014. It obviously links in with our revised strategic plan for 2019 to 2022. And again, that under the strategic plan, we also have a plan to carry out the mandatory review of all local fire and rescue plans. Again, there are elements which I've already covered in the quarterly report. However, some of the figures that are provided there are a review of, obviously, over the last few years in particular. And again, some of the points, just to really tie in actually with some of the questions there just recently in terms of the root cause in particular of house fires. So on page 47, in the third paragraph there, again, there's some interesting information there, I think, that we'd probably complement that. Obviously, in terms of the geographical areas of Dundee, elderly accounting for 25% of all accidental dwelling fires. And obviously, some people who live in social isolation are more vulnerable as a result of that. There is a comment obviously there in the connection and the use of alcohol or drugs with a contributory factor there of 20% of all house fires against the historical data. And like I say, I think that is particularly interesting in terms of some of the comments that have been made tonight already. So there aren't any major changes to this particular fire plan. As I say, it is a mandatory review and we're obviously presenting it tonight for approval from elected members. Thank you.
Thank you, Graham. Well, I see no questions on that. So if we are in agree, then that is approved. So thank you very much for your time tonight, Graham.
And thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Mr Waddell?
Yes, thanks, convener. Item four, the Dundee Local Policing Area Quarterly Police Report, which is before you. which is before you.
Okay. And we will just hand over to our colleagues in Police Scotland.
Thank you, convener. It's Chief Superintendent Andrew Todd here. I'll not take the committee through the port. That is before you. However, we just draw a point that this covers the quarter, year to end quarter two, which obviously covers the Covid lockdown period. So many of the figures and facts in here, whilst accurate and valid, are difficult to compare and contrast with previous years, given the changes in behaviours across the country brought about by Covid lockdowns. So if I may offer that caution, but obviously happy to take any questions whatsoever. And I'm joined as well, as always, by Dave McIntosh, your local area commander for Dundee.
Thank you. We have the first question from Bailey Wright. Then it's Bailey MacPherson. After that, we'll take the first two. Bailey Wright? Bailey Wright?
Sorry, I didn't unmute myself.
No problem.
Thank you, convener. My question's in two parts. Page six, under challenges, it says the Scottish average as it's the level of violence exhibited towards the emergency service workers. I was a bit concerned, actually, to see this. I was just wondering how it was being managed. Will I go on to the second part? Yes.
Please do, Bailey Wright, yeah.
On page 65, at the bottom of the page, it says, information contained within this document complements both priorities and supports reporting through community planning partnership structures. I have a feeling that this is the police committee, it's your committee, and I think that you should be looking to in the future report on some of the stats that you have here at this committee. And on the page 69, on antisocial behaviour, I think this part of the report is a bit confusing. The reason I'm saying that is I have a greater number of antisocial behaviour cases than I do have any other problems coming to me from residents. And really, it's ruining people's lives. Many people have been bullied, with some even feared for their lives, and especially when they're being threatened. Some people are suffering mental health problems because of it, problems ranging across the board from noise nuisance threatening behaviour, other behaviour designed to upset people, drugs offending and others. So maybe you could elaborate on some of the actions that you've been taking to help people feel safe and secure in their own homes.
Thank you, councillor. I'll take the first point, and then I'll cover on some of the second ones, and then ask Dave McIntosh to give some detail specifically around some of the activity we've been covering in that area. The emergency service assaults, members will recall my previous attendance here at committee, that utterly unacceptable. There's not a function of our job to be assaulted or for my staff to be assaulted. Clearly, it's not only ourselves, it's all emergency service workers, it's colleagues in fire and rescue, colleagues in hospitals, ambulance service and such like. We do a huge amount of work, primarily, yes, there's a crime involved here and people will be detected and they are almost universally 100% detected. And the courts are very supportive of protecting their emergency service workers, as you would expect, given there's a discrete piece of legislation to deal with it. However, it's also a health and safety matter for me. Officers and colleagues in other services should expect a safe system of work and a safe work environment. So we do a tremendous amount of work through there to establish whether or not there are any control measures we can apply. So maybe improved custody handling arrangements, perhaps improved equipment, perhaps just improved practice and learning. This year, fortunately, it's been delayed as a consequence of the Covid restrictions, but the force of Police Scotland have committed to doubling the number of days of officer safety training per year. So that's going from one to two days. It may not sound a lot, but it's a significant investment for an organisation of our size to do that for every single, myself included, officer within our operating areas. We just provide one caution, however, to some of those figures. And so much as a number of the assaults occur within our custody block, within the cell block, we ordinarily have two primary custody facilities within Tayside, one in Perth and one in Dundee. As a consequence of some of the control measures to manage Covid-19, we have temporarily, at the start of this financial year, suspended the custody arrangements at Perth, and all custodies now come through to Dundee. What that means is that there are no assaults within the custody suite in Perth, and instead they've all been transferred through to Dundee. They are still assaults. And in Tayside context, it makes no difference whatsoever to me as a commander. But from your perspective, I think it's important that you know that we're bringing custodaries from Perth and Kinross and Angus into the custody suite within Dundee. So as I say, lots of work going on in that space. We do reach out to our staff, particularly everyone that's, if anyone is injured as a consequence of an assault, we make sure that we contact them and write to those officers. Every morning, I'm updated on all of the violence against staff within the area so that we can have a good look at it, see if there was anything further that we can do. And as I said earlier on, we got a tremendous amount of support from the Crown Office around these as well. So I trust that answers councillor's question, and I'll move on to antisocial behaviour. Again, members will recall, I know the importance of this within our community, and members have spoken about this in the past with me. And the antisocial behaviour, in my mind, is a product of other criminality in the main. And councillor spoke about drugs, noise nuisance. These are matters we treat very highly, and antisocial behaviour is one of our key local priorities. It ties into the LoIP in our city plan. And there's a clear objective and the outcome we see, because, you know, the threats to public safety and wellbeing are resolved by proactive and responsive police service. So it doesn't stand as an isolated activity in my book. It underpins things like noise, it underpins things like dangerous driving or drugs. But that being said, we recognise that our visibility around these issues is very important for people's confidence. And as a consequence of that, there has been a lot of work going on across the city. And particularly, I'll ask Dave now just to touch on some of the recent activity that we've put in place despite the Covid restrictions limiting some of our proactivity opportunities. David?
Yes. Good evening, folks. And absolutely, I think that the first point to answer in relation to that is that the first time there's a call into Police Scotland into one of our control rooms, officers are responding to antisocial behaviour or forms of crime. We have sort of kind of resolution teams, and we even had extra officers during the Covid period where it was more difficult to see folks face to face so we could pick those up. Then moving on from those, there's the traditional sort of kind of type. I think you all kind of appreciate officers been out and about. We have still been doing that, but we've been doing slightly less of it. But even within that, with partners recently, when Graham was mentioning the examples of the work towards a kind of bonfire night, but also specifically some of the work that's ongoing at the bottom of the hill town involving sort of multi agencies and partners. And I heard this week for the first time in a long time, there weren't sort of multiple calls to flats, to brothers getting used round about some of the multi storey blocks there. And likewise, some of those proactive kind of measures are used at sort of the multis in Locky that councillor Mara would be kind of interested in as well. So a lot of that work is ongoing and we continue to do it. But I think it's how we do it at the moment is kind of key to that. And obviously, the assistance from our partners in housing, we've been highlighting sort of kind of issues there to see if we can all collectively deal with these issues. But I think you see the numbers there, the stats wise, we're up around about 9,000, significant issue. And of course, antisocial behaviour, as the chief supervisor was saying there, covers a variety of issues. It's just not standalone in itself.
Okay. Thank you, Mr McIntosh. With Bailey Wright, were you looking to come back in?
Yes. I just wonder, I mean, recently, there is another item on this committee about antisocial behaviour. And it would appear that Coles side, which is some of our areas, Locky and East End been the worst areas. I was just wondering if you wanted to comment on that.
No, we recognise the demand across the city moves. You know, we would like to think that where we focus our efforts, we have an impact. That means that other areas will then start to feature, and we then move our resource into those other areas. So we know just now that we've got a lot of work going on in the hill town. We need to find a way to take learning from there and push it into some of the other areas and continue that constant progression to improvement, never accepting mediocrity as the standard. So no, absolutely, councillor, we're watching the figures very closely. Clearly, we don't have unlimited resources. Clearly, we don't have unlimited capability and capacity. But what we do have is an unlimited ambition to do all that we can. And we will continue just to push forward into these other areas. So please be reassured that whilst it might not feature as a focus, activity still goes on, and undoubtedly, it will focus in due course.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. We'll take Bailey MacPherson and then councillor Duncan.
Thanks indeed, convener, and grateful to the officers tonight for the report. My question is about the unfortunate increase in prevalence of fraud and scams. And as the update that we receive on page 83 of the papers tonight, it clearly indicates that Covid-19 has increased opportunities for organised crime groups in relation to this sort of activity. It's quite clear that an increase in fraud compared to 2019, 20, and a drop in detection rate. And I can understand the challenges faced by Police Scotland in this of challenging time in which we live. My question's really around getting the message out to our population in Dundee about these scams. And I'm particularly, I note that the report indicates that Police Scotland continues to raise awareness of scams through social media. But I'm thinking in particular of phone scams for particularly the elderly who may not be on social media, may not be online, but are still susceptible to telephone scams. And I was just really wondering what other efforts Police Scotland is able to make to highlight these sort of issues, to ensure that the population is alerted to it. I'm thinking, for example, the print media and such like, because it's a real concern that particularly when it's elderly people are scammed of, you know, their savings and so on. And I'm just really wondering what efforts can be made to highlight this concerning area.
No, thank you, councillor MacPherson. And it is a deep concern. We know the sums of money that can be involved can be massive at times. Equally, they might not be huge in the scheme of things, but they're very important to individuals who have lost. I think also the impact on individuals themselves to have been scammed, again, affects their confidences to their engagement with the wider world. You're correct in so much as the challenge here for us isn't so much about detecting these, it's about preventing them. A number of these individuals that engage in scams are in other parts of the world. They might be in Russia and Africa and America and Switzerland, wherever. And often, we can trace them to a country. But beyond that, we've got very little and no jurisdiction and very little capability to do much more. So investing huge sums of effort locally into those types of activities is likely not going to give us the return that we need. We need to prevent people being taken advantage of in the first place. It's not to say for a moment that Police Scotland doesn't pursue these types of inquiries internationally. We absolutely do. Because as members will note, it's not just within Dundee or Tayside we're seeing these increases. They're right across Police Scotland and our recent quarter two statistics from Police Scotland. DCC Taylor commented upon that increase. Now, clearly, if there's an increase, you'll see the decrease in detection rates because most of them are abroad and very difficult for us to detect. So with that said, locally, we've obviously been impacted initially by the Covid restrictions causing us to take less of a hands on approach to prevention. But we are finding fresh ways to be more involved. What we have done recently is we've been holding some seminars at some of the sheltered housing, but in a very distant way, where we talk through some of the challenges and some of the scams. They are the more obvious ones. Clearly, some of these things are so sophisticated, it's not until you unpick them that you realise there's actually a scam behind it. But we have been doing that. We've got an excellent relationship with banks. So that where a transaction, so somebody might come in and empty their life savings out of their account into cash, that, you know, the bank will be suspicious of that. And we have a good working relationship with them where we can perhaps come in, support that individual, see if they need anything else, and the wider support either from their family or from some of the social care partners who can support that one. We've also got a Week of Action coming up, a Week of Action around fraud, which is going to come out early next month, so in the beginning of December. I'm trying to nuance that's going to be a Police Scotland. So that'll be across all media, not just social media, picking up councillor's point. I'm trying to nuance that into the issues and risks that we face within our own area so that it's not too bland for us. And I'm confident that we'll manage to do that. But much of our activity hasn't changed from previous years. We just continue to work away at trying to highlight some of the risk and concerns and give people the confidence to maybe just pause and think, do I need to transfer this money now? Or like ask my daughter, my son, my, you know, my bank, phone the police, whatever it is to feel the need to, to just get that support. And obviously, for me, it's not just about the potential victims, it's about those that provide support to them. I mean, I know, without being indiscreet, that I provide support to my family. My dad will send things to me and go, is this a scam or not? You know, and I know that all of us will do that to one extent or another for our families. So it's also about getting the message out to folks there as well. So I trust that answers councillor MacPherson's question.
I'm very grateful to Chief Superintendent Todd for that comprehensive reply. And the fact that you are being very proactive, the Week of Action, I think is an excellent, you know, nationwide, and as you correctly say, nuanced for our own area, very helpful indeed. I'm just very conscious, you touched on some socially distanced, you know, meeting with sheltered tenants. I'm just very conscious of the fact that we all participate in normal times in very regular meetings with tenants groups and such like, which is a very good way. And Police Scotland have been very good at supporting these over the years. Clearly, a lot of that activity has just shrunk away to nothing at the moment. And so any possible means of, you know, getting the message out with regard to the prevalence of scams is to be greatly appreciated. So I'm grateful for the comprehensive response. Thank you.
Before I let councillor Duncan in, I think Ms Berlin wanted to come in just to maybe elaborate on the work that Dundee City Council does to support Police Scotland?
Absolutely. Thank you, convener. Just to say that the work that we do through our trading standards team is very prevalent in this area. And they also share a lot of their knowledge and experience much wider with our tenancy officers and wider, you know, through the sheltered wardens, et cetera. And the sheltered wardens are in regular contact with individuals by telephone in this situation. But they can generally pick up if there are particular issues of concern, and they can discuss that with the trading standards officers too. So there is good relations between Trading Standards, Police Scotland and our wider tenancies and community wardens as well.
Thank you for that. Councillor Duncan?
Thanks, convener. I'm just, with regards to pages 97 and 98, my attention struck by the disturbing rise in incidences of domestic abuse. And there's a few things here, but I mean, I'd appreciate officers' insights. And to the, it states in the report that offences are significantly higher in Dundee than in other areas of Tayside. So I'm interested in that particular way. I'm also just interested in general terms, there's certainly a lot of media speculation that this rise in such incidences due to the lockdown, semi lockdown Covid, impact of Covid upon our lives. So I wondered if you have any insight into that? And I suppose most of all, what comfort can society take in terms of, are we going to see maybe not an end to this sort of activity, but, you know, a beginning of these horrible incidences actually taking a downward path?
No, thank you, councillor. They are quite disturbing, and the volume of them is quite disturbing as well. And councillor's right to call out the comparator with other parts of Tayside and wider Scotland. There are too many. My view on this is somewhat mixed, however. I think the risk that we anticipated lockdown was going to bring was that a number of these incidents would be hidden from us. Because there would be eyes on, folks wouldn't be there in workplace or friends and such like. I think at the start of the lockdown period, that was probably a strong potential. But as it eased over the summer period, there was more visibility. And I do not take any comfort from an increasing number. But I think what we can do is perhaps take some reassurance that the work we did over the summer period, clearly with partners, third sector particularly, to encourage people to still come forward if they were victims and to have the and to have the confidence that we would respond and that we were fully capable of responding despite the COVID restrictions, may have actually resulted in that risk not actually materialising. So we put the mitigation in place over the summer period. It's difficult to say whether or not the increase is due to an increase in confidence in reporting, an increase in our inquiries. Clearly, we all know, it's a known truth that when somebody reports being the victim of domestic abuse, it is not going to be the first time they've been a victim. So what we will do where possible is we will backtrack through history where that's appropriate to identify other crimes and offences. So one report to us may actually result in numerous crimes and offences being identified, potentially even over a number of different victims and partners. So it's very difficult to say whether or not increase is an increase in confidence, an increase in our reporting mechanism, or actually an increase because of the risks of lockdown. I would say, however, the the last one, we probably was the one we were able to mitigate against with our partners. We never took any resources out of that area of business. We didn't stand down our our response around that. We tailored it slightly, you know, more virtual meetings around how we might manage prolific offenders or prolific victims. And but we made sure that we had all of our structures remain solid and strong and we were able to deliver for victims. It is a challenging area. I have no doubt about that. And we just need to keep working at it to try and change the culture and change the belief that this is tolerable because it absolutely isn't.
I'm actually, I'm very grateful for that. And you summed up what you ended on it. The appropriate note that in this day and age, I think the general perception of these kinds of crimes is that they're totally unacceptable.
Thank you councillor Duncan. We have councillor Scott followed by councillor Flynn.
Yes, thank you, convener. Just to actually commend the police for the success of the summer drink driving, drink and drug driving campaign. And it's good to see that you managed to catch so many people. Just one thing though, I'm just wondering about the detection rates because they appear to have gone down. Can you just explain a bit about why that is the case, please?
Yeah, thank you councillor Scott. So the drink and drug driving, the change there is that it's not comparable with previous years because our roads policing colleagues now have a new tool in the drug driving wipes, if that's the best way to use it at the side of the road. So they can make an instant assessment as to whether or not somebody is under the influence of a number of prescribed drugs. And therefore it then goes through to laboratory for analysis. That inevitably brings a degree of delay into the process, whereas ordinarily with drink driving, you blow in a machine, it gives you an instant result and the person's either charged or not charged. During the COVID lockdown period, there was less of that and more blood and other fluids taken to evidences, which again leads into laboratory analysis. I can assure councillor that if somebody is positive, that will come through the system in due course and the person will be charged.
Yeah, well, thank you, Chief Superintendent Todd for the clarification. Good. Thank you. Councillor Flynn.
Thanks, convener. Since you've touched on what was happening in the Hilltown, can I just make a comment? First of all, if that's okay. Can I just say thanks to your local inspector and your local sergeant? Because I think early doors of the pandemic, I got in touch with them to ask that we actually do a bit more down the Hilltown because of obvious reasons. And they actually did that. There was more patrols, a lot more presence. And I think it's been recognised the difference that's made. So I have to thank yourselves for that. If you can pass my thanks on to them. I think I'm going to go back to something I've mentioned before, and that's Operation Close Pass. So it won't be, it comes as a surprise to you probably. COVID-19 has resulted in what I would say is a substantial increase in cycling within the city and across the country. And this committee, as you know, actually supported the introduction, sorry, of Operation Close Pass at previous committee. July this year, there was a launch, a joint launch by Police Scotland and Cycling Scotland to give cycle space campaign, which is similar to Operation Close Pass. And we've seen Operation Close Pass taking place in Glasgow, Aberdeen, Edinburgh. And yet I haven't seen anything here in Dundee as yet. So can I ask the chief superintendent to maybe update the committee and what's been done in Dundee to protect the ever increasing number of cyclists? And what's happened to Operation Close Pass within Dundee and Tayside?
Thank you councillors. So I'll take the last point first. So Close Pass will be run in Dundee. Members, I clearly recall members' position on the matter. And and members will recall that I've always said that we value Operation Close Pass. But its use and rollout needs to be consistent with the impact that it would cause. As I said numerous times this evening, we don't have unlimited capability and capacity. So we need to be wise in the resource that we use. The increase in cycling clearly increases the risk and therefore tips that balance now into Close Pass as a worthwhile exercise for us to perform. So I've committed that we will do this. And I've asked our roads policing colleagues, there is a degree of equipment and a degree of capability that needs to be wrapped around this. It's not just that easy to roll out. And I've asked our roads policing colleagues to take that on as the specialists to provide that operation within our within our area. And I would expect us to have run that operation before we come back at the next committee meeting. And regards to what have we been doing to protect cyclists within our area? It remains the case that the number of collisions involving cyclists is incredibly low within our area. We continue to monitor that. That aside, we do still continue to be visible on our roads. We do still continue to challenge poor cycling and poor driving. And my my view is that the the numbers of collisions are reflective of everybody's efforts, not just ours purely. And but the the need to put the Close Pass in place is evident. So we've agreed that we're doing that.
Thank you very much for taking that on board and actually acknowledging the fact that there is an increase in cycling and also the increase in risk for cyclists. So I think everybody that's on a bike would actually appreciate the fact that Operation Close Pass will be coming in. Because it does mention in the report, which is a very good report, a number of comments about vulnerable road users. And I'm sure everyone accepts that being a cyclist on our roads is making you vulnerable. So again, thank you for highlighting the fact and then acknowledging the fact that Operation Close Pass will be getting introduced in Dundee.
Yeah, I would obviously welcome that that news, Mr Todd. Thank you very much for that. And as a slight segue, as you maybe mentioned, road safety there, and there's been a couple of questions on in a row about it. And this is maybe one for Mr Presswood as well. When we have instances of red light running, what steps can Police Scotland and indeed Dundee City Council take on roads where we know that this may be a persistent problem of cars just thinking, well, we're not slowing down, we're going to take our chances and go through those lights? Do we have steps that we could take?
So there's a multitude of steps that we do take there. So, you know, clearly, a lot of our traffic lights are covered by CCTV. So people are likely being recorded what they're doing. We've also got the visibility of the officers themselves stopping people if they do go through that that red light. And so if we work on our on our education, engineering and then enforcement methodology, which is commonplace, we've also got the, if if there is a road accident, that's a big if, then clearly, if we identify that there's a problem with that junction because all of our serious and fatal road collisions, there's a joint visit thereafter to see if there's anything within an engineering context that could prevent future accidents or indeed prevent that one. So that can roll out as well. In regards to any technical measures that can be taken at the traffic lights, that's something I would need to defer to colleagues who actually own the roads rather than myself. But certainly from an enforcement perspective, we don't particularly target them because people don't drive through a red light and the police car's sitting there. But we absolutely act upon it. And that's not just cars, but cyclists as well. But it tends to be the cars jumping the red light at the last minute. And you see it in a lot of towns, we get that. So we do, we do deal with it.
Thank you. I wonder, is Mr Presswood?
Yeah. Yes, I am. Yeah, from a city development point of view, I would emphasise that we do liaise regularly with the police and investigate any known hotspots. I would say that as a general issue, I am not aware of a significant problem of red light running. It certainly hasn't been brought to my attention by any elected members. And if there are instances where it's identified as a regular occurrence, we would of course look into it jointly with police. But as far as I'm concerned, it isn't a widespread issue in Dundee.
Okay, thank you. That was very helpful. With that, I'm going to move on to the next questions and that's councillors Rome, Richardson and Lynn in that order.
Thank you very much, convener. I'll be very brief. And my question is about page sixty-nine, as many other members' questions have been. And specifically road deaths and drink and drug driving. I'm sure all of my colleagues will welcome the very, well, zero level of road deaths from nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one. I'm just looking at that in comparison with the drink and drug driving. And my apologies if you answered this already to councillor Scott, but I lost signal briefly for a few seconds. The detection rate has gone from ninety-eight to eighty-five, but the number of cases is actually up. And I assume that this is similar to the emergency services assault in that this is something that happened while police officers were there observing. I'm just wondering if you could explain this to me further.
Yeah, of course councillor, I did touch on it briefly when you dropped out. So the predominant impact factor there is is that we have a new mechanism for drug driving, which is a wipe that gives us information as to whether or not somebody is under the influence of or has within their body a range of controlled drugs. A sample is then taken and sent off for laboratory analysis. That introduces a delay to the detection. And also during the COVID period, there was less use of the intoxication machines, if that's still the correct name for them, in the office that gives you an instant reading. And again, it's blood or other body samples are then taken and sent off for analysis. So to all intents and purposes, the simplest way to answer it is that there's a it's coming through the laboratories and it just takes time because these things aren't as quick as, as you say, there at the time when you see it happening.
Thank you. And apologies again for making you repeat yourself.
Councillor Richardson.
Thank you, convener. I think it's very interesting to see that whilst, you know, most people in Dundee were under lockdown conditions and only allowed out for basic necessities, et cetera, that the criminals have been so active. In particular, the drunk drink driving, although I suppose with fewer cars on the road, they might have been easier to spot. Same with the drug supply, you know, the drug drug supply being up twenty-seven percent. The fact that quite, quite a lot of people were basically staying off the roads and staying off the streets. Did this make some of these crimes easier to detect and spot the the drug dealer in the crowd sort of thing? Or no crowds?
No, thank you councillor. I mean, I, the increase in the drink and drug driving, I think I've already covered and that they're not directly comparable because we didn't have the drug capability that we currently have now. The actual drug supply and drug possessions, that remains a really high priority for us. Members will know, I've had a position on this for a number of years now where we want to support the vulnerable, but I will relentlessly pursue those that sell that profit from the sale and supply of controlled drugs. And that hasn't changed under the COVID period. We keep at that constantly. And there's been a lot of work being done within our area. And we, and I wouldn't say our success was down to folks standing out more within a crowd, if that's the right phrase. Because they are more devious than that. And it requires just a more sophisticated approach. However, some of the possession charges are a consequence of other activities. So it might be we arrest somebody for an assault or for a domestic crime and they happen to be in possession of drugs. It's not something that we particularly focus on as a priority. It is a priority. We don't focus our activity on it. I focus our activity on those that profit from the sale and supply. But what we are able to do is then obviously refer some of these individuals into the care and support that they need for their addictions.
Thank you. Just just one basic other question. I mean, I know it's been like an area where you've had a lot of focus on in the past, but Dundee still remains far higher than, you know, the average for the rest of the division. And I'm just wondering where do we stand in relation to maybe some of the other cities and that may be a bit more comparable? Because when you look at, you know, Angus and Perth, they have so so many fewer cases than the likes of Dundee.
It's a, it's a great question councillor, that I simply can't answer. Unlike local authorities, Police Scotland doesn't benchmark its performance between different areas. So I respect that that's something that members would like. It's not what, it's not how we report our performance. And the best I can do is report the performance within our own area and then against the Scottish average, rather than reporting against benchmark towns and cities because we simply don't have them within Police Scotland. Whether or not that's something the SPA will ask the chief constable to do in due course, I can't answer. My apologies.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Richardson. And councillor Lynn has withdrawn his question. So with that, is this report agreed? So thank you to Police Scotland for coming down tonight and giving us very helpful and informative answers to the questions from members. Thank you. Thank you to fire and rescue as well. Mr World.
Thanks, convener. Item five then before he reads the report on antisocial behaviour due to September two thousand and twenty, which is for noting.
Okay, this report is coming to committee after a commitment given at the previous committee. And I'm going to open up for questions with councillor Malone first of all.
Thank you, convener. I'm hoping that colleagues can hear me. I'm beginning dipping it out of the the audio. So hopefully people can hear me. Can I first of all thank the officers from neighbourhood services for compiling this report. It was actually myself through an amendment that called for the augmentation or the augmenting of the safety committee reports through a report on antisocial behaviour. And I don't want to go back over a lot of the points that have been made previously in the police report. Because I think we all are aware of the scourge of antisocial behaviour within our communities. And what I was trying to do when I asked for this report to come forward was to get a sense of whether or not what I was seeing through the inquiries from constituents, we seem to be a growing prevalence of antisocial behaviour, whether that was actually seen throughout the city. And also I wanted it to come from neighbourhood services because I believe that in addition to the activities in the work of the police, there are many, many activities that have been undertaken by Dundee City Council employees and officers to try and mitigate the consequences effect of antisocial behaviour. For example, if you looked at the, we heard about the noise nuisance. Noise nuisance, particularly in the areas where you've got tenemented buildings, is often a key and probably most recurring form of antisocial behaviour. But it's just not about noise nuisance, it's the impact that has on people's lives. And I spoke to constituents who, one of whom was a lorry driver, a truck driver who couldn't get the sleep he required because of the noise. And when it was investigated, it turned out to be that the type of housing, the age of the housing was contributing to that. So I think there's much wider investigations and much wider examination of issues of antisocial behaviour. But I can't thank hardly enough the people, particularly operating out of Sinclair Street in Lochie West for the work they've been doing with the constituents and antisocial behaviour. And when I mentioned to one of my constituents, I would discuss this on this evening, he asked me to pass on my gratitude after three months of harassment from a neighbour. He's finally been able to return home to a safer dwelling than he had before. What happens within these antisocial behaviour cases is often relationship breakings that go on for many, and people never return to the norm of or return to the feeling of security within their. So I welcome the report and I actually, I probably shouldn't say I welcome the report because within the report itself, it does examine the sheer scale of antisocial behaviour across the city and the sheer scale of the problem that our officers and council employees are dealing with. I mean, just in one quarter, we're seeing eight hundred and fifty-five cases of antisocial behaviour, ranging from noise nuisance to threats of violence and issues related to drugs. That on just on a basic rough calculation is around about three and a half thousand cases per year. That is showing there is a blight of antisocial behaviour in the city. So the report does give us a good indicator. It also gives us good indications of the actions that have been taken and the success of some of the actions that have been taken. But what it doesn't do, but it probably couldn't because it's the first thing this report's been for today, is start to develop an action plan on how we might tackle antisocial behaviour. We also need to be able to give assurances to the antisocial behaviour team that there are enough sufficient resources available to help them assist them in tackling antisocial behaviour. And that's something we as councillors would want to have an oversight of. So as I said, I think the report is really good. I'm glad it's came. I'm glad I asked for it because it does examine the scourge across the city. But I would ask that in moving forward, whether or not we can have an action plan in this to see what actions we could take and what the trajectory of antisocial behaviour is against the action plan. I hate to ask officers to do any more work, but I think we have to understand the the trajectory of antisocial behaviour, what we can do to support our officers and our communities and the people who are victims of antisocial behaviour moving forward. who are victims of antisocial behaviour moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Malone. I'm sure we're all on the same page about supporting our officers in dealing with this scourge, as you say, in some of our communities. Councillor McCorvin, I think, you had a comment?
Thanks, Chair. Similar to councillor Malone, it's a welcome as such report. I think it's important to note as well, when you look at antisocial behaviour aspect of that, and a report that we'll see later on today in policy and resources, that the ward areas of Coleside, Lochie and North East are most prevalent, both with poverty and antisocial behaviour. So there's a direct link there with both. And I think we need to make, we need to look at serious comparisons there at tackling both.
Okay, thank you. I wonder if, Elaine, you would wish to come in at that point? If not, we've got Bailey Wright, who I missed in the list just a minute ago.
Thank you, convener. I would like to thank the committee for their comments in relation to the team who are working very hard to tackle instances of antisocial behaviour across the city. And it is very much a partnership with the antisocial behaviour team, the Safety and Alarm Response Centre, community safety wardens, and working with Police Scotland and other partners. So it is the widest of partnerships. And also, we do take it down to locality level, where we have multi-agency meetings at the locality level to ensure that we are looking at all the cases and looking at, and making sure that we're using all the tools that are available to us to deal with antisocial behaviour. We do understand the impact that it has on people's lives, and it can be a devastating impact on people's lives. And what we aim to do is try to nip it in the bud, try to deal with it. And I think hopefully the report indicates that, that a lot of the cases we can resolve at the low level. And that's because the team get in there and work very early with the case before they escalate. And they also work with colleagues within the housing sector in relation to where there is issues of noise transmission, to look at if there's any solutions that we can bring to the table in relation to noise transmission. So just would like to assure you that this is a multi-agency approach, and it's an approach taken across neighbourhood services as well, with a range of officers delivering, trying to ensure that we get a response as quickly as possible at the lowest level to prevent escalation.
Thank you, Elaine. Bailey Wright, if I let you in there, and apologies, I did miss you earlier on.
It's okay. Thank you, convener. I'm looking at page 114, surveillance installations. I'm just curious about what kind of surveillance is being used. And also, do you have enough of them? Also, on page 117, the stats that you've got up, I really welcome seeing that, actually, even although it was a shock to see that Lochie, Coleside, Lochie and Eastend were the worst areas. I'm glad to hear Elaine saying that the multi-agencies are actually taking part across the board. But could I say that antisocial tenants have been moved around the city? And when they're moved, the cycle starts again. And in some cases, within two weeks, the antisocial tenant moving to another house. And I think we really need to look at effective action to protect those people who really don't deserve to be on the receiving end of this treatment. And I would certainly be supporting my colleague, Charlie Malone, and his support for an action plan coming out. Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey Wright. Councillor Flynn?
Thanks, convener. Could I just follow up on what you said?
Sorry.
Sorry, councillor, sorry.
I never got an answer to the question about the surveillance installation.
Well, I'll do, I'll let councillor Flynn just finish this, and then we'll bring Elaine in after.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, Bailey Wright, didn't get you jumping there. Just to follow on from what the previous two contributors have said regarding the action plan, this is, this report, I really welcome their support, because it highlights a lot of the issues within the ward, which are always coming to our doors. But this is a snapshot. I think before we can do an action plan, we need to see what the trends are, and a bit more information. I think on previous committee, I've asked for a report back from the SAC, to see, Miss Villan mentioned SAC, to see what the performance of the SAC has been since the SAC was then stated. So I think there's a bit more information required before we can possibly go forward with an action plan, convener. And I think that has to be considered before we actually really do consider an action plan.
Thank you, councillor Flynn. Let Elaine in at that point, to address both Bailey Wright and councillor Flynn.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, the SAC has buried in particularly well. And we were more than happy to bring back an update, probably within the next quarter's report on antisocial behaviour. We can make mention specifically to the work that the SAC has been doing, has been, has been very effective within the city. In relation to surveillance, I'm going to ask Tom Sterling to come in and just explain some of the surveillance work that we use to tackle antisocial behaviour.
Yeah. Thanks, convener. Thanks, Elaine. Yeah, surveillance is part of the toolkit that we have. It's strictly controlled in that where we do want to do covert surveillance, it has to be regulated by, it has to be authorised under the regulatory, Regulation of Investigatory Power Scotland Act. It is a tool that we use. We probably use it reasonably frequently. And I think you've previously had reports to the P and R committee about our activities in that area. We would use that where, for example, if there's complaints that indicate perhaps there's been issues around drug dealing, perhaps, it might be a situation that we'd use covert surveillance. As I say, it is regulated. We also use surveillance, noise surveillance equipment. We don't do that in a covert way anymore. We used to do that. But what we do now is we bring to the attention of the person who is the subject of the complaint, that we are going to be installing noise monitoring equipment. And quite often, that can be enough to resolve the problem. But if it's not, we will put in, provide noise monitoring equipment to residents that they can use. So there's a range of situations that we'd use surveillance. It is carefully considered and it is controlled in some instances by legislation that we need to adhere to in doing that.
Yeah. I think I come back in. So do you have enough, or is it a budget-led thing? You know, because I think there must be a waiting list for things, because people that I've asked to have, you know, that type of equipment put in, never seem to get it, or it's munched in line before they do get it.
I think part of the issue is that there is the equipment aspect, and then there's the kind of staff resource to do that. We think we have the balance about right. We do tend to use that, this technique, you know, as much as, probably a little more than some of our peer councils do. So I think we're reasonably well placed. But if there's an issue with people having to wait, then I'm happy to look into that.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, Tom. Well, I see no further questions. So is that agreed? Okay, we'll tell that's agreed. And I'd like to thank officers for helping bring that report forward. And I'm glad to hear it has gone somewhere, meeting the expectations of councillors. And thank you for councillor Malone's comments at the start. Okay, Mr. Wardle?
Thank you very much. Item six is the community payback orders, and the committees ask for the recommendations.
I was just going to open that one up to any questions? Bailey Wright?
Thank you. I actually welcome this report. The community payback scheme has really been so successful over the years, especially in Dundee. Dundee certainly played its part because Dundee led it in many ways. And we have to thank everyone that has made it work. At first, when it started, no one wanted an offender near their houses. And now people, you know, people are looking for all sorts of jobs to be done in the community, and they still do. In fact, I bet Glenn has a big waiting list for it. I understand that, like all services, the pandemic has an impact on the operation of all the criminal justice system. Could you please let me know, or let us know, how you respond to these challenges?
Well, I'll let Glenn in there, Bailey Wright. But I think you're right. I think it is a positive report, and it's welcomed, as you say, by communities, and has been beneficial for those who have been on the programme. So I'll let Glenn Lloyd in.
Thank you, convener. And thank you for the question, Bailey Wright. And yes, the impact has had an impact on us, just as it's had an impact on all partners, right, across the system. We've needed to adapt. But our starting point was that we're an essential service, and we need to get the balance right between protecting people from the risk of infection, and between maintaining justice and protecting people from other forms of harm. So we have preserved MAPPA. We have concentrated on supporting both short and long-term prisoners unreleased back into the community. We have sustained supervision of people on community payback orders where they're subject to a supervision requirement. And we've done that in accordance with levels of risk. So those at the highest risk have been seen weekly, medium risk fortnightly, and lower down the scale on a monthly basis, alongside a range of other supports from the third sector and the partners as well. And of course, at the last committee meeting where we heard the report on corporate parenting, we also said that there's been an increase in diversion from prosecution during the period. That said, despite those adaptations, the pandemic has had a huge impact, as I say. Some courts have been closed. The courts that have been opened have operated on a restricted basis. Unpaid work was stopped initially because of the risks associated with people being in groups. And the prisons, as we know, have seen a growth in the prison population, particularly in relation to the remand population, people awaiting trial and sentence. So going forwards, we're increasingly seeing the solution as being a reinvigoration of the whole systems approach. So from arrest to sentence, an increase, a further increase in diversion, the use of arrest referral, structured deferred sentences, creative use of community payback orders, all obviously subject to our work with partners, and all obviously subject to the needs, the continuing needs to balance justice, and for justice to be done and to be seen to be done, not least in relation to protecting victims from possible risk of further harm. In that context, and in the meantime, we continue to deliver unpaid work. Unpaid work reopened again in August, albeit on a restricted basis. I can say, we currently have 15,000 outstanding hours in the system. And that in September, for instance, 810 of those hours were completed by people subject to orders. So a range of measures, some immediate, some dependent on partners, and some measures ongoing as we work out the longer term solutions with those partners right across the system as a whole.
Okay, thank you very much, Glenn, for that.
Thank, thank you, Glenn. Well, I see no further questions on that report. So if that is agreed, that is the business of the Community Safety and Public Protection Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, convener. The next committee is the Neighbourhood Services Committee.
Okay, thanks very much, convener. We have Neighbourhood Services Committee. And firstly, are there any declarations of interest? Okay, there have been no declarations. I'd like to advise the committee that requests for deputations have been received from Ian Ford of Chair of the Friends of Riverside Nature Park, Diana Otto of ECO Dundee, and Mary Harwood, Dundee Miley Support Group, who would wish to address the committee in relation to item six on the agenda, the biodiversity duty report. Is the committee minded to hear the deputations?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay. Councillor, are you on mute?
I beg your pardon. Right, in that case, if we just move to the deputations, is Mr. Ford present?
I am. I've just unmuted, I hope.
That's yes, we can hear you now, Mr. Ford. You've got seven minutes to make your deputation, after which members will have the chance to ask you any questions they may have before we take the next deputation. So off you go.
Thank you very much, convener and elected members. As was said, I am Chair of Friends of Riverside Nature Park, and I'm speaking also with support from Dundee Climate Action Network. And first of all, I would like to commend the biodiversity duty report, which tells us how much has been done for biodiversity in very recent times by the council. I'm delighted that all the councillors voted for the declaration of climate and ecological emergency. And that is very important. And my major theme this evening is to ask all the councillors to commit to urging the council to change their green space management operational regimes to benefit biodiversity. Secondly, why is biodiversity important? We're all very aware of COVID-19, sadly. And the official pandemic report states that the cause for this pandemic is very clearly related to our interaction with nature, biodiversity, and the destruction of ecosystems or increased contact with wildlife. And it's likely these viruses will continue to be more and more prevalent. We also have a statutory duty in Scotland since 2004 to enhance and maintain biodiversity. Number three, the lockdown and the effect on biodiversity and us. Despite all the negative bits about COVID's impact on us, nature thrived during biodiversity. And also, it was very positive for many people to reconnect with nature. In Dundee, flowers bloomed where they hadn't been seen for a very long time, because there'd always been, pollinating insects were abundant. And people's physical and mental wellbeing was benefiting. And maybe most importantly, or significantly, people sent positive comments to Dundee City Council. And all this was from a lack of action. No mowing, no fossil fuel usage, less air pollution, all very positive for nature. Firstly, I'm referring to the bullet points I sent out. As lockdown eased, I feel that Dundee City Council squandered this ideal opportunity to make a sea change in the way their operational regimes worked for green space management. It had cost them nothing for nature to flourish, biodiversity to flourish, people to enjoy it. But sadly, it was business as usual. Mowers started mowing manically all round the city. The green oases that had been buzzing with life became green deserts devoid of life. Almost 100% of the pollinators were annihilated. And we depend on pollinators for our lives. About 70% of world food is pollinated by insects. Without them, we die pretty soon. I do believe that the councillors get what the emergency is about. However, we need the council to keep in step with this emergency. Emergency implies action now. So I do feel very much that the council's actions spoke rather louder than their words, as they squandered this opportunity. So my plea again to the councillors is for you to commit to urge council staff to make this cultural shift now. to make this cultural shift now, and a year has been wasted. Moving on, as there was a consultation survey that started from the proposal to have 27 biodiversity areas across the city. And this stuttered and stopped and started during the summer. Many of the areas were cut, despite them being meant to be left uncut. But the survey is on the go now and the wording of this is spot on, pointing out the statutory duty, the biodiversity action plan that the committee approved earlier in the year, and the desire to follow the biodiversity action plan. There is, however, a need for massive public engagement. I believe some has been done already by members of the council staff and this has been successful. But this is a massive undertaking and there is a clear need for resources to do this. Green groups can certainly help with their expertise. But I feel there is a need for the elected members to make it clear to the council that there need to be extra resources and now.
Can I just interrupt for a second? You have one minute left, Mr Ford.
All right, thank you. As Chair of Friends of Riverside Nature Park, we've worked in partnership with the council very successfully. And this has helped us greatly over the years to get a better understanding of how to manage for biodiversity. And we've recently got a Green Flag Award, which we're delighted about. And a lot of our management involves cutting and lifting. This is very central to the task for the council. I would urge the councillors as well that there is a desperate need for training within the council and for elected members and for the general public. And in summary, I would just like to say that there are great opportunities for linking sustained food production, orchards, pollinators, et cetera. And the task ahead for you is not small, but I wish you luck with it and I would like it to be now. And let's hope Dundee is changing for a truly greener future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Ford. Just on time there. I have a question for you from Bailey McPherson, please.
Certainly.
Thanks very much, convener, and very grateful thanks Ian for your presentation this evening. Couple of questions. One is, obviously with Riverside Nature Park being on board, and I know you and the Friends very well. You alluded to the success in biodiversity terms of Riverside Nature Park. Do you think there are any specific and particular lessons that can be learned from that in relation to other parts of the city? And secondly, do you think that there, I think, I sense from our Head of Environment, Mr Boyle and his colleagues, a real desire to engage with groups across the city, get their input, get their views and get the necessary actions to, you know, make the strides forward that you want to achieve. Do you think that more could be perhaps done in a slightly more formal way to engaging with groups like your own with an interest in biodiversity to ensure that all these sort of inputs can be given maximum exposure in terms of the council's policy going forward?
Thank you very much, Bailey McPherson, for those two points. First one, can we learn from Riverside Nature Park's example? Certainly. From the Green Flag Award, which was our first try at this, we got very high marks apparently. And the judges commended the use of cut and lift. That's cutting vegetation once a year, maybe twice a year, but removing all the cuttings. And they wrote in their comments, "Well done plus plus." And this could be replicated citywide. In the past, I've sent Director Tony Boyle and convener tonight, if it's Anne Rendell, information on plant life's management of green space. I've sent this a couple of times. So it's, I mean, it's in black and white ways to do it. I believe it's quite well known within the department, but there's need to act on it. And nature showed us herself how to do it. And this summer, if we just hadn't mown, and the council could have said, "Hey, look what's happened. No cost, no fossil fuels." And then engaged with the public, that would have been ideal. Secondly, you asked about engagement with green groups. There have been various attempts over the years to engage successfully with the green groups, but they've never persisted. And I think now with the climate emergency being fully acknowledged and declared, although a bit louder would help, it is a very good time for green groups to Dundee Climate Action Network is dying to get involved. You'll maybe know that the Dundee Climate Action Plan is shortlisted for a public service award. And also, the Green Health Partnership is shortlisted. So I'll leave it there.
Very grateful for your response, Ian. I'll have a question for the Head of Environment at the appropriate moment, following on from that, convener, with thanks.
Thank you very much, Bailey McPherson. I see no other questions to Mr Ford. So we will move on to the next deputation. So can I ask Dr Diana Otto, Eco Dundee, to make her presentation, please? And again, you've got seven minutes. Off you go. Oh, I think you're on mute, Dr Otto. Got it? That's it.
It's okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, honoured councillors, honoured convener. Yeah, I speak on behalf of Eco Dundee, who are a local group engaged in better soil sustainability and the health, the human health effect that it has. And this meeting has been sort of facilitated by Dundee Climate Action Network. I should also say that I have a PhD in toxicology and I've worked for many, many years in academia for postdoctoral work and toxicology was one of the main subjects. So speaking about the toxicity of glyphosate is something very close to my heart. After the Second World War, agriculture intensified drastically. And instead of making bombs anymore and using biological weapons, they were converted into fertilizers and pesticides. And as a result of this, more than 70% of the planet's soil is either seriously exhausted or has been destroyed. Now, the intensive agriculture kind of pushes the pollinators from the countryside into the urban areas. But unfortunately, too many towns and cities use pesticides, especially glyphosate, which is a herbicide, in very high amounts to keep spaces tidy. Now, this tidiness is unfortunately not very good environmental hygiene. It is sprayed as a liquid and it sits on the ground. And depending on the ambient condition, it can sort of evaporate. And these vapors sort of enrich the air and cause major detrimental health effects. And they're also depleting the soil of any life. And pollinators also die because the food sources are getting depleted while also having an effect on them. But it is particularly the chronic exposure that residents suffer. And I'm focusing more on this here because glyphosate is a carcinogen. And this is sort of now a fact that is not disputed anymore. There are tons of papers available and in June this year, there was just another lawsuit comprising 125,000 plaintiffs in the US alone. And Bayer had to settle outside of the court because in court they lose. And they settled for nearly $11 billion in payments to the plaintiffs. But there are other toxicities that are really very important to think about. It's respiratory tract problems, skin irritation, nausea and headaches. And it's sort of the cocktail effect. And particularly with the pandemic and COVID-19, there's a high concern obviously on the lung tissue. And so if people are pre-exposed to glyphosate, they can be preconditioned sort of to have worse effects with COVID-19 if they're infected. Now, the expenditure of the Dundee City Council for glyphosate per year ranges between £15,000 to £95,000. And this is from the past four years, what we got from Freedom of Information Acts. There are many, many cities across Europe and the UK that have become pesticide free. And I should mention that Edinburgh in particular is sort of leading that they have banned glyphosate usage in residential areas. And Stirling Council has recently also pledged to go pesticide free. Now, the key asks we have is massive reduction of glyphosate usage because it's excessively used in Dundee. And virtual elimination in residential areas. Its major point is farmers really don't sleep in their fields and they have a really good way to control it. But we sleep in our houses on residential grounds and have to inhale the vapors that are emitted by glyphosate sprayed its grounds. Now, there needs to be better transparency in the spraying. And the council should also issue warning because sometimes it happens that in parks it is sprayed and about a few minutes later you see totters sitting in the same grounds and playing around. And this is obviously is very toxic to them. The bookkeeping in the council is quite bad. Exempted areas sometimes get sprayed and they shouldn't be sprayed. So there has to be much better bookkeeping. And there also, there should be much better ways to tell people that when they have complaints, and there are many complaints we know about. It is much more than 20 complaints a year. It's, we know at least about 60 people being very concerned and have complained.
Just to let you know, you've just got one minute left now.
Thank you. Complaints issued, so that there are serious pathways. And it doesn't have to go to court, it doesn't need lawyers. And I think the council should be more open to this and explain it to people what the procedures are. Now, council staff needs to sort of relearn about the soil and soil health and how that affects then also positively on pollinators. And this all is then connected for better health to us. And lastly, I really want to appeal to all you councillors because you can only help us not to be exposed to glyphosate. And you know, Scotland doesn't have the best health record. So we're really hoping that you take this seriously and think about how much money we spend on glyphosate and how detrimental it is for residents' health. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr Otto. I see one question for you from Councilman Malone.
It's a question and also just part of the conversation. Dr Otto, I have correspondence with you on a few occasions about this issue. And I find that the contribution you're making to be quite alarming in terms of the extent to which the potential hazard of glyphosate in particular, maybe I'm not being ignored, but haven't been considered deeply enough. I've heard the paper from the anthropologist that looked at the impact it has on, not just in terms of vegetation, but on wildlife or on animals. And there was a report in The Telegraph in 2019 that was looking at liver damage caused to dogs who were kind of walking in areas. I guess what we're looking, what my question is, is what kind of dialogue would you like to see going forward between council officers and people with concerns about glyphosate in particular? Given the UK government regulation allows councils to use glyphosate up to 2022. Can we start a dialogue about taking glyphosate out of the equation? And if so, what do we have to do to control some of the dangerous vegetation that people come across like Japanese novy?
Thank you very much, Councilman Malone. That was very kind. And obviously, I appreciate all our communications we've had in this regard. And yeah, obviously, it's affecting our pets and our hedgehogs are declining too. And they are, for example, Dundee University has since last year gone pesticide free and they're using alternatives of either flame or heat foam or fatty acids or vinegar derivatives. So the expertise is there and there are examples there. And there's obviously that the way the council can sort of interact with those people. And obviously, that it has been approved until 2022. I have written many times about this to several councillors that it has been a default by the European Union, the Chemical Agency of the European Union. They actually violated their own guidelines and approved it still for further five years. But there are several countries, like, for example, Austria has taken out glyphosate and Bayer has pushed them to courts, sort of their lobbying machine is quite active. And Sweden and Germany have also started restricted areas. And there are many examples of several cities, like, for example, Paris has been 15 years completely pesticide free. And also down in England, there are several cities that are pesticide free. So I think the expertise is all there and there are other ways of addressing this. And I think the council needs to really focus on the health effects because I myself had poisonings and I know of other people having felt unwell. So I think this is what we have to do. Obviously, I was still, sorry, I'm extending this. But in sort of interactions, as Ian Ford mentioned sort of before, that we, for example, Brian Harris from the Climate Action Group, from the Climate Department in Dundee City Council, he has joined many of our meetings with Dundee Climate Action Network and other meetings. And I think it would be really good if either Mr Boyle or Rod Houston or one of their deputies could come to those meetings and we could start more interactions because that would be most helpful.
You okay with that, Councilman Malone?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the deputation for bringing what I think is going to be a growing, serious issue, particularly as we move to 2022. And if we are going to have this biodiversity extended throughout the city, there's going to be more engagement with biodiversity within the population, with animals, et cetera. And I think it's time, it's tempest for us to actually have a look at this again and work with different groups on how we might move forward to a glyphosate at least for the future. I do have questions for Otto, but I'll leave that for once you can conclude this bit.
Okay, thank you. Councilor here, you've got a question for the deputation.
Thank you very much, convener. And Dr Otto, thank you very much for your presentation. It was very informative. Thank you. You made a lot of very interesting points and thank you. And I agree with a lot of what you're saying. I noticed in the report, the officers have indicated I noticed in the report, the officers have indicated that they intend to reduce the use of glyphophosphates across the council. But they have indicated that it is essential for treating occasional weeds like Japanese knotweed and giant hogweed and Himalayan balsam. And I just wondered what you felt about that.
Yes, that's obviously a problem. And sort of because ecological measures are not always so decisive in eradicating them. But they don't occur in all areas. And I think it is particularly more on railway sites. And this, where it happens that sort of, they cannot be so easily controlled. And we obviously sort of ask really that there is a major reduction in glyphosate. But in these particular areas where giant hogweed and Japanese knotweed grow, that there should be really, sort of maybe they could use it just for those specific areas in order to control it until they are sort of having better measures of controlling it by more ecological sound methods, you know? We're not asking for complete elimination, but a massive reduction, in particular in residential areas. Because in our areas, we haven't found any of those really nasty weeds that we are talking about. And thank you so much for your comments.
No, it's my pleasure. You've done very well tonight. Thank you. But I do actually have some of these in my ward, I'm afraid to say. I've had constituents tell me about it. So I know officers have had to try and deal with some of them. But thank you anyway. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr Otto. Move on to the third and final deputation, which is Mary Harwood, who is from the Miley Support Group. I'm sure most of us know that the Miley is an urban area that they look after and keep very tidy and clean. And I'm very grateful to them because it's on my patch. So over to you, Mary. You've got seven minutes and off you go.
Thank you, Anne. The Dundee Miley Support Group thinks the entire approach to and the basis for Dundee's environmental maintenance needs to change. The default is to mow, spray and rip out shrub beds. Trees are considered disposable. Healthy trees are being removed without consultation, as in those removed from the Miley on an excuse that we don't understand. If life can pass through the bricks and mortar of Millview House, why can't it pass through trees? The Green Network Guidance Document, which lays out the need for wildlife corridors, is never implemented. Parks and green spaces are important, but it is more important that they are fit for biodiversity. The one or two wild places the council have allotted are not enough. Biodiversity is not just planting wildflower meadows. It is also about gardens and the careful choice of plants, not only for beauty, but as food for pollinators. Bees and other insects are in serious decline and we need to reverse this before it is too late for human life. The formal flower beds in parks are often sterile looking with weeded gaps between them. They should be planted thickly with native plants. Plant some fruit trees. Members of the public could benefit from them. The ground under all trees should be planted with native perennial wildflowers and bushes. Grass verges shouldn't be cut at all during the summer. And where suitable, there should be whole swathes of wildflower meadows. There is a field immediately north of Kings Park School, which would be suitable for this. These meadows should only be mowed and stands taken away after all the wildflowers have seeded. Yet we see the few that are there are often mowed while they are in full flower. I have been told that the council are using a machine that cuts and gathers long grass. And this is a start, but needs to go much further. Cutting grass every two weeks is not needed. I understand that the mowing of sports grounds will be necessary, but reduced mowing in green spaces would allow clover and daisy to flower. Bees and insects love that. I remember when I was a child, I loved picking daisies and making daisy chains. It would also save money on fuel and free workers to look after other plants. The clear links between degradation of ecosystems and the appearance of pandemics have now been described. This is a climate, ecological and health emergency, which requires a drastic immediate response to cut fossil fuel and glyphosate use and restore ecosystems wherever possible. Now, there are only two rangers employed by the council. Staff need to be retrained as park rangers, not mowers. Isn't it about time the council changed direction and drastically changed working practices? Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mary. I think I have a comment from Councillor Malone.
Yes, I have one question. I would contest Councillor Reynolds.
Sorry, I can't hear you very well.
Sorry, I would possibly question Councillor Reynolds' geographic locating of the Miley. I'm sure it starts in the coffee world and extends. That's where it starts and maybe finishes in your world. But like all good things, it starts in Lochte. I'd like to thank Mary in a few months. Probably somebody who uses the Miley about four to five times a week. And if anybody wants to get the best chives in Dundee, they should go up the Miley around about March April and you'll be able to split them free of chives and use them. They're absolutely excellent. But the work your group does is absolutely fantastic in maintaining the cleanliness. And whilst there's never a good thing to say about COVID, one of the things I've noticed, and I'm sure you've noticed as well, Mary, is the increased traffic that there is in the Miley at the moment. It's more and more families experience the actual pleasure of walking up and down the Miley. So I think you've got to thank groups like yourself for the work you do. I agree with you about the comment about removing wildlife, sorry, removing strawberry and trees without communication, without consultation. I did raise at the top about the removal of trees. And a particular part of the Miley was told that it's to do with communication. It was to do with the signal getting through to St John's, you know, how to maintain the wifi at St John's school. I'm sure there's other solutions that could be offered. I have a question to you, Mary. You mentioned that you're concerned about a failure of consultation, of communication with the council office. How do you think that might be improved?
Well, that kind of says it all. If the council wants to remove trees, they should at least attempt to talk to the people in the area where the tree is or whoever actually looks after that land. But particularly with the people in the area. Because sometimes people are very disappointed to come home from the rut and discover that their favourite tree's gone.
Councillor Malone, do you want to come back?
Yeah, I just, I think I agree with you. I think there has to be a much closer link with community groups and council officers. And I think they would welcome that. I don't think they would be opposed to that. I had concerns during the summer about the amount of cutting of trees. And the kind of residue was just left lying about and presented a real fire risk. And I didn't want to promote it in case somebody actually saw it as an opportunity. So I think the officers will be, I think you'll find the officers would be quite willing to engage. I think that we need to reach out to them and I would certainly be happy to act as a conduit for that.
That would be fine. That would be good.
Okay, thank you very much, Mary. If there's no more questions for the deputation, I think we just move on to the item, Mr Waddell.
Yes, thanks very much, Convena. Firstly, just apologies there. Before we go into the item, I think that Billy Roberts may have been indicated she had a declaration of interest to make. I'd just like to check whether it is for the minute, please.
Councillor Roberts?
Yeah, I've got a declaration on number eight. I couldn't get my keyboard to work. I'm a tenant in Dolmoff and area.
Okay, thanks very much for that, Billy Roberts. I'll note that accordingly. Okay, thanks, Convena. It takes you on to the substantive item, item six, which we're, deputations were related to. That's the D City Council's biodiversity duty report and the committee's asked to give recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Just, can I just remind everyone, this is not actually our biodiversity action plan, which addresses some of the issues that the three deputations have put to us tonight. This is a duty report that we have to publish every three years, detailing the actions that we've taken to fulfil our biodiversity duty. It sets out some of our achievements towards targets, one of which is the biodiversity action plan. And that will be updated to committee early next year. For my part, I'm really pleased to see engagement with particularly the three deputations tonight. But can I just say that there is constant communication between certainly some of the people here tonight. They've had answers back from officers. We have consulted widely with people. We're consulting widely at the moment, as the deputations have mentioned, with our biodiversity survey. And I do take exception that, you know, some of the comments that have been made about not consulting and not communicating. Because I do think that particularly officers do take the time to go back as quickly as possible to people with some of the questions and queries. And we do engage very widely with the many friends of groups that exist around the city. And we're very grateful to these groups for bringing things like this to our attention. We will continue to do that. So, questions to officers. I think I had Councillor Malone again first.
Yeah, it was just about how you could strengthen the communications. But I'm cognizant of what you said there, Convena, about the ongoing consultations and communication. One of the things that was mentioned, I think the deputation by Masotto was the effect of European legislation on the use of glyphosate. And I just wondered if officers have had an opportunity to look at what the possible implications of Brexit are on the use of chemicals of this nature.
Okay, thank you. Mr Boyle, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, thanks, Convena. If I could, I would just say some of the context, particularly about Masotto's comments regarding this particular point that Councillor Malone raises. It's worthwhile remembering that the council conforms not just to EU legislation, but also UK guidance in relation specifically to the safe use of pesticides. In fact, UK has its own directorate that looks at this specific area. So it's not just European guidance. Now, we conform as a council with that guidance. And obviously, when it moves forward in the future, we'll continue to monitor and adhere to future guidance. But just on the current government advice, it does describe glyphosate specifically as an important chemical for use in environmental operations. And it is approved for use within the UK until 2022. But over and above that, it's subject to regulatory checks under the control of pesticide regulations. And all council personnel responsible for applying herbicides are also fully trained and certificated as per the Food and Environment Protection Act. Again, heavily regulated this area. The Control of Substances Hazardous to Health Regulations, known as COSH, also plays a legal duty for an employer to evaluate the risk to health and to eliminate or adequately control such risks. Now, Dundee City Council has a cautious assessment for glyphosate usage based on this guidance. I'd like to take this opportunity also to reassure members that safe systems of work have also been established to ensure controlled usage and potential risk exposure is minimised. And the application follows Health and Safety Executive Guidance regarding signage, which is deemed not to be necessary. We are, of course, continually reviewing the use of herbicides. But as Nissin has been mentioned earlier on this evening about the control of non-native invasive plant species such as giant hogweed, Himalayan balsam, Japanese knotgrass. And also to ensure that our infrastructure does not crumble and it remains intact. And we also look after pedestrian and road safety, which the use of herbicides and specifically glyphosate supports. But I can confirm that the council is currently investigating alternatives to future herbicide application. And this will look at things like environmental design of street seating and green spaces in the future. And it's ongoing at the present time. And also liaising for other local authorities and benchmarking, look at who are looking at other alternatives and what are other viable control methods. And I've got to counter a point that was made earlier on. The council is not excessively using herbicides or glyphosate. In fact, the opposite is true. Over the last two years, we've actually been making steady progress in reducing volumes. And they're not some of the volumes, I think they were getting quoted earlier on. So be reassured, members, that we are looking at this seriously. We don't have an excessive use of herbicides and specifically glyphosate, and that it's been managed carefully. It's also been mentioned that its anticipated introduction of biodiversity grassland will reduce the use of herbicides even further. And current consultation, as members will be aware, is ongoing with communities to help inform recommendations going forward. Now, Convena, as you mentioned, the intention is actually to provide a specific update to committee within the context of the local biodiversity action plan, including specifically reduced herbicide use early in 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question from Billy McPherson.
Thanks, Convena. And I agree with you that I don't doubt the good intentions of officers and their willingness to engage. I certainly find Mr Boyle and his colleagues very good at getting back to me on any constituent questions in this sort of area. However, Mr Ford did indicate in his presentation that some form of increased engagement, perhaps on a sort of more persistent basis, might be helpful. And I was wondering if there might be some merit in some form of informal but regular meeting with green groups across the city, just to ensure that the sort of level of engagement meets expectation across the groups that are working on our behalf on green-related issues, friends of groups and suchlike across the city. And I'd just be grateful for Mr Boyle's views on how we might yet further improve engagement.
Mr Boyle?
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Billy McPherson. I think that's a really important point. It's something we'll obviously have to give some due consideration to about just how we achieve that, particularly in the light of the pandemic and the communications, even as we see tonight the teams meetings. But we'll certainly go away and look at that. And I do think there's merit in hearing all views and trying to get this collective understanding about what the issues are. And I do look at taking that forward, if you'll allow me to go away and look at that.
That's greatly appreciated. That's a very positive response, Mr Boyle, and grateful for that. Thank you.
Okay, I have Councillor Scott.
Sorry, did you mean me, Convena, Derek, or did you mean Philip?
Yeah. Oh, sorry. I think it was Derek, was it?
All right, okay. It was just following up on what one of the deputations said about the number of rangers that we have in place. Because I know they have an important educational role to play and also with facilitating conservation activities. So I really wonder if you can confirm, please, how many rangers we have, how many we used to have? Because I can remember at one stage being quite a bit more than two. And how many we actually need to carry forward our biodiversity plan?
Mr Boyle?
Okay, thank you, Billy Scott. I know that we've got two countryside rangers at the present time. We've also got a biodiversity officer. the present time. We've also got a biodiversity officer. We have got a range of officers. In fact, the role and responsibility of every officer that works within the neighbourhoods and specifically the environment division is to obviously protect, enhance and also safeguard the environment. So perhaps the roles in some of the job titles we had years ago do not relate specifically to the kind of the wider roles and generic responsibilities that our staff have got now. And that includes our frontline staff and gardeners. But I'm afraid I can't tell you how many we used to have. That's something I'd have to look at, because it precedes the time that I was here. But I'll go away and look at that and come back to you. But I can say to you that the wider responsibilities in terms of the traditional role of park rangers and environmental concerns has expanded towards the primary role of every individual that works for neighbourhood services, and specifically the environment division.
Okay, thank you.
Bailey Keenan, do you want to come in with a comment?
Thanks, Convenor. Convenor, I thought the contribution by the deputations tonight's been really worthwhile. I think every one of them have made a valued contribution. And many of the points that have been made need to be taken forward. I think we've all had bits in our area where there's been shrubs removed, that people have been a bit upset about that shrub being removed and grass planted or whatever. So I think there is lessons to be learned. I think when we're, some are suggesting that we believe every area well and we don't take the land moreover, then I think that's something that we need to take more people with us. Because I seem to recall that when we were in lockdown, there was a great number of people within the city felt we were being very disrespectful to them and their families when we didn't manage to cut the grass within the graveyards in the city. So, you know, there is much that we need to do in the relation to biodiversity, and there is much that we need to do to convince people that it's the right direction without upsetting anyone. So, you know, I think that officers have got a tight rope to walk. And I look forward to them bringing that forward. I think the suggestion by Bailey McPherson that there's an ongoing dialogue will be very useful, and it will help we shape policies to the future.
Yeah, thanks very much, Bailey Keenan. Can I just say, I'm seeing the comments from our guests, our deputations down the side. Obviously, the length of this committee so far precludes us from carrying on this discussion here. But rest assured that we are interested in what all groups have to say, individuals, members of the public. As I say, that's why we're trying to get as many people involved in the survey as possible. But there are other views. Some people like to see cut grass and bonnie flowers. So, you know, we'll have to take everybody's views into account. But it's an education process as well. And people did get used to seeing different methods in the lockdown times. So let's hope that we can carry on. We will continue to communicate with all of the groups and individuals that are out there that want to have a say. So if we can just leave it at that just now, and if that's all the questions, can this report be agreed, please? Okay, thank you. We'll go back to the agenda. Mr Waddell?
Yes, certainly. Thanks very much, Convenor. You've got the agenda on to item two, the contract for the collection and treatment of textiles, and the committee's asked to accept offers as recommended.
Approval of this report will see the council still being able to receive a small income from the recycling of textiles, albeit it is small, but it still shows our ongoing commitment to our reuse, recycle, reduce, reuse and recycle policies. Any questions on this one? No, not seeing that. So can this report be agreed? Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Convenor. Item three then, before Easton D Council Housing Domestic Abuse Policy, this is for approval.
This report seeks approval for a domestic abuse policy which aims to support those experiencing domestic abuse who live in council housing. It builds on our Make a Stand pledge, which I'm sure you'll remember from last year, the executive director took that up, and we made a pledge to assist those suffering and offering support to those suffering domestic abuse. So we've now progressed that on. This will send out a strong message to both victims and perpetrators that such behaviour will not be tolerated in council housing. We've developed this policy in partnership with local stakeholders working in this area, all of whom support the report. I think I had a first question from councillor Crookshank.
Thanks very much, Convenor. I'd very much like to welcome this report and the culminating policy. I would like to commend the executive director of Neighbourhood Services for her personal input and to the staff. In days gone by, domestic abuse was a hidden blight that women had to suffer in silence. Police were often unwilling to intervene in what they viewed as a domestic dispute or matrimonial dispute. Myself being a survivor from that era, I'm glad to say much progress has been made. The emergence of organisations such as refuges, women's aid, and the rise of the feminist movement and the various refuges set up to ensure the safety of victims and reduce the risk of further violence has been most welcome. It gives me great comfort that Dundee City Council has taken the issue of domestic abuse as an integral part of their housing policy and its effective liaison with partner agencies. The maintenance of adequate funding for these agencies that support victims of domestic violence, I would advocate that there should be no further cuts in the coming budget setting. I would like to extend my thanks to staff from the council and liaison with their partner agencies for their sensitive and speedy action in ensuring the support and rehousing of two victims of domestic violence that I personally know during the first lockdown. I commend this report. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments, councillor Crookshank. Most welcome, and I agree with everything you say. I think I have a question from councillor Duncan, please.
Thanks, thanks, Convenor. Yeah, I mean, I mentioned in the previous committee that fortunately now, I think most of us now within the Waddells, we're the sort of claim, is what it is, is, you know, widely unacceptable, and we all condemn it. And I'm looking at page one, and I fully agree that, you know, with the sentiments that victims of domestic abuse should have the right to choose. Of course, of course they should. But then on page 12, and I'm seeking some guidance here from officers, that says the new clause in the tenancy agreement prohibiting domestic abuse may subject the continued occupation of the council housing jeopardy. Now, just, I'm seeking guidance here, that it depends if the abuser has signed up to the tenancy, I suppose it could be ejected. But suppose the abuser isn't on the tenancy agreement. I'm just wondering how practically, how does it work?
Okay, thank you for that. Mr Simpson, would you like to address that question?
Yes, thanks, Convenor. In terms of the question raised by councillor Duncan, when we approached this, we looked at whether we should have a blanket policy that said we will seek to evict the perpetrators of domestic abuse. And we decided, along with national guidance and information from the third sector, that that wouldn't necessarily be the best solution. We would take each case in its merits. So what we will do is we'll look very closely at the specifics of every case that comes forward, and we'll look at what the best option is, primarily for the victim of the crime, as you say, but also taking into account the need for the wider family, because there may well be children involved. We will look at appropriate solutions for both the victim and the perpetrator, and we'll do that on a case-by-case basis. And we'll do it with partner agencies as well, including on occasions the police.
Okay, I'm grateful for that guidance. I mean, I think a nuanced approach, you know, rather than a blanket approach, you know, is probably the right way to go forward. But I'm just mindful of, you know, what the report says, that, you know, the victims of domestic abuse should always have the right to choose.
Absolutely, yeah. But I commend this report as well. I think it's a really good move forward, another step on the way to assisting people. And the report we had earlier, you know, where police were talking about domestic abuse as well, and there has been a downturn during lockdown, but we fully expect that there'll be an upturn, you know, when we come out of this. So this is something that hopefully will assist the more complex cases that we think will probably come our way. Okay, I'm not seeing any more questions. So with that, can this report be agreed? Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much, Convenor. Item four then, before Easton D Strategic Housing Investment Plan, and the committee's asked to give you the recommendations.
So this report seeks approval for the next five years of Dundee's Strategic Housing Investment Plan, or the SHIP, as it's referred to. Members are aware, this is the key statement which gives priority and future housing developments by the council and other social landlords, which will be funded by the Scottish Government Affordable Housing Investment Programme. In the last period, 2016 to 2021, it funded 958, sorry, housing completions. We don't have resource planning assumptions for the next period, 2021 to 2026, firm resource planning. And officers are referring to this as a light ship, I won't make any comments about that, but due to the current restrictions from COVID. So, as I say, you know, this is a slightly different and slightly lighter ship, but it's there before you. So do I have any questions on this, please? Not seeing any questions in the chat. So if that's the case, can this report be agreed?
Convenor, councillor Crookshank's indicated.
Oh, sorry, beg your pardon, didn't see that. Yep, councillor Crookshank.
Apologies, Convenor. I'm working from my phone because my iPad's not working, so I can't find all the gadgets. Yeah, I wish to welcome the report. It's a good plan. And the Labour group welcomed the additional scope to borrow £6 million in order to build new social rented houses. We were also pleased to see that priorities included purchasing suitable open market properties to meet housing requirements of extended families and people with particular needs, such as the disabled and elderly residents. Thank you, Convenor.
Thank you, councillor Crookshank. Not seeing anything else. So can this report be agreed? Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Convenor. Item five then, before Easton Environmental Playground Improvement Programme, and the committee's asked to give you the proposals.
This report seeks approval for environmental improvements across the city, amounting to over £400,000 worth of work. It includes projects in every ward of the city. Areas of improvement were identified in green flag assessment, and others have been requested by friends and community groups throughout the city. So, I'm just seeing what questions we've got. Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks very much, Convenor. And like you, I welcome this very positive proposed work. In particular, I'd like to highlight the fact that in my own ward, the proposals in relation to the sea brazen embankment are very welcome. It's a large and very much in-your-face embankment, and certainly improvements there will be greatly welcomed. My question is really around, in relation to that particular work and the other work across the city, in that particular part of the report. It indicates that the estimated start date's the end of the month with completion by the 31st of March. I was really wondering if that actually, given the challenges facing the department in the current challenging situation we've all found ourselves in, if officers are saying that all this work, because there's a significant amount of it, and this portion comes to £250,000 alone, will it will be possible to complete by the end of the financial year, or if in fact some of it will drift into the 2021 financial year, in terms, not so much meaning the financing, the actual completions of the work?
Can I ask the executive director, would you like to address that, Elaine or one of the other officers?
Thank you, Convenor. I think I'll ask Tony Boyle if he can give an update on that.
Mr Boyle?
Thank you, Convenor. Thank you, Elaine. Yeah, the aim Bailey McPherson is to get all of the works that have been listed done by the 31st of March. As you'd be familiar, there's usually with the variety of environmental projects we do, at this time of the year, there'll be one or two projects that will just creep into the new financial year. But it's very much been set out today to hopefully get members' approval, so we can get cracking with these projects and have the majority, if not all of them, done by the end of this financial year, by the end of March.
That's greatly appreciated, and I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Short?
Thank you. It was just really an opportunity to say thank you on behalf of the community council and Harb, sorry, City Centre and Harbour Community Council and the St Albans Forum. They've worked very closely and built up some really good relationships with the team across neighbourhood services and environment. And when they knew this was coming to committee, I think they were really quite excited to actually see things happening. So just to pass on their thanks and obviously the wider community, because it will have a big impact on the ward. So thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments, councillor Short. Councillor Duncan?
Thanks, Convenor. Just very briefly to say, you know, they're very much welcome the forthcoming improvements to Dawson Park. And actually, I was there just a couple of days ago, and the inclement weather just reminded me of an ongoing problem when the cherry tree walk, which frequently floods. I know it's not mentioned in this report, but I just would be grateful if officers would bear that in mind for future walks, because it somewhat spoils what's a very popular walk.
Okay, thank you, Mr Duncan. I'm sure officers will take that on board for the future. Bailey Wright?
Thank you, Convenor. I just welcome the report, and I'm glad to see that the playparks in the Cold Side area have been upgraded. They were looking a bit sad, so I'm very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey Wright. Not seeing any other questions, so. Councillor Rome, do you want to come in on this one, yeah?
Yes, thank you, Convenor. I just want to welcome the report as well, as my colleagues have. I note specifically the works to Fithy and the Dixie Burn. But also, there's great reference to shrub planting throughout the city, which I think is just a further reminder of how much neighbourhood services does in terms of keeping areas nice and also having that biodiversity. So I just thought that was worth highlighting.
Indeed. Thank you very much for those comments. So with that, can this report be agreed? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Convenor. Item six, we've dealt with. You did have item seven, tenders received, and you're asked to accept offers as recommended.
Okay, a range of tenders in this report, which you've seen. As I say, I'm conscious of the time. So are there any questions on any of these tenders? No, not seeing anything. Okay, with that, can this report be agreed?
Thanks, Convenor.
Thank you.
With that item being agreed, item eight then, is additional report, tenders received in Llannafin boiler replacement report, and you're asked to accept offers as recommended.
Okay, again, some good news for Dundee East, Ward Six, I believe. 227 houses in the Llannafin area will receive new boilers at a total cost of £883,000. Any questions on that one? No. Okay, can that be agreed? Thank you. I believe that's the business.
Convenor, councillor Richardson is indicating she wishes to speak.
Oh, beg your pardon, yes. Sorry, Margaret. On you go.
Thank you. I just wanted to welcome that report, and it's good to see that Llannafin is going to get a number of new boilers. It's also great to see that construction services is doing the work. So the contracts go into, you know, the people in Dundee, and the money will stay in Dundee. What I would also maybe like to say is, and ask, is will the materials in the main, including the boilers, be sourced from Dundee firms?
Not sure. Do we have Rob Peterson on the call, or can anyone else take that one?
Convenor, I know that Neil Martin's on the call, so you can probably take that question.
Neil?
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks, councillor Richardson. What I'll do is, I'll go back and double check with Dundee Contract Services and our procurement department. I think there's actually a framework in place for the procurement of the boilers. So So through contracts services, they're procured in a compliant route. But we'll double check that and we can come back to you and give you a bit of detail on where the equipment and the material are sourced from.
You okay with that, Margaret?
Yeah, thank you. That's great. I really think in terms of community wealth building, it's going to be more and more important that we could try and source as much as possible from the local areas, if not Dundee, Tayside, then Scotland. And obviously, coming out of the Covid and recovery will depend on creating wealth in town. Thank you.
Love you doing that.
Okay, thank you. I think that's the business now. Thank you.
Thank you, convener. The next committee is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you've all had your tea. We'll just go straight on to the business. Tracy.
Okay, the first item, are there any declarations of interest?
See nobody indicating, so I'll take that as no.
Okay, I must then advise the committee, there is a request for a deputation to address the committee from Martha Stewart on behalf of the Dundee Climate Action Network and the Dundee People's Assembly relative to item 18, tackling the climate emergency through partnership action and establishing Dundee Climate Change Leadership Group. Do you agree to hear the deputation?
I'm going to take it as a given that somebody that's waited this long will be heard by committee. So Martha, thank you very much for your patience and your stamina tonight. It's really appreciated and I'm just going to hand straight over to you. You've got seven minutes and if you can hang about at the end of that, and I'll invite any questions from members.
Thank you, John. Good evening, committee and convener. As was said, my name is Martha. And like last time, I'm here with Andrew on behalf of the Dundee People's Assembly, with added support now from the Dundee Climate Action Network. At our last meeting, where we agreed the content of this deputation, we had representatives from a variety of Dundee's green groups. The last time I spoke to you all was in August with regards to the Covid-19 recovery plans, noting that the strategic will for a green recovery was not effectively translating into policy. We were grateful that you approved several of our recommendations, one of which included the reason why we are back again tonight. A specific report to update on the climate action plan's progress, including details of emerging opportunities to accelerate progress against targets. Tonight's report must be commended for its commitment, honesty and ambition, both in terms of the clarity around the resource and capacity issues facing the council and the actions being progressed to resolve them, especially around carbon budgeting, but equally the fantastic proposal for a Dundee Climate Leadership Group to advance the profile, pace and scale of climate action. We hope that you will enthusiastically support this proposal with the added assurance that green groups will have a seat at the table. We also feel it's important you consider community and union representation. The point emphasised in the report around engagement with the community is crucial if the council are to succeed, not just in bringing the public along in environmental and climate change decisions, but also in ensuring that they are making decisions and taking action in collaboration with them. At the moment, there are several examples of a distinct disconnect between public perception and council action. The reasons for environmental action must be communicated effectively, and if capacity is the key obstacle, then we ask that in addition to increasing this, you work with green groups to deliver awareness, drawing on their expertise and contacts. Dundee City Council must engage better with communities on the ground, because the only way for climate action to work is by us working together. On this point, I would like to inform you all that the Dundee People's Assembly aims to facilitate assemblies in all eight wards in the new year, in order to continue building on the transformative collective power we witnessed in August. This is a new way of doing politics that is based on participatory democracy, where all voices are heard, listened to and valued equally. And we sincerely hope that you will follow these closely and perhaps you might even take part yourself. Whilst we will be acting in our own ways to enhance community participation and leadership, and while we fully support any attempt to consolidate and strengthen capacity within the council, we would like to explicitly address what we see are clear internal problems with regards to leadership and governance around climate action. The situation as it stands are effectively siloed services, where climate action is regarded as a niche responsibility rather than a shared corporate responsibility. The Sustainability and Climate Change Team, made up of just two people, is unable to exert the necessary influence required across services. This is evident for environmental groups on the ground, who repeatedly struggle to achieve change in line with council policies. The shared responsibility for meeting climate and biodiversity targets is not translating into service actions. And while this report does well to list the many good things that have happened, targets are being missed and many others have not yet been strengthened with specific dates. Key examples can be found in planning, waste, communities and in green space operations. The structure as it stands significantly hinders transparency, accountability, consistency and shared responsibility. Strengthening and meeting targets in the climate and biodiversity action plans requires the understanding and buy-in of all services, working in a fundamentally integrated way. Climate action concerns every council service, department, employee and representative, and to succeed which it must, demands an effective centralised governance and leadership structure to report on and oversee climate and biodiversity progress. We do not claim to be experts in council governance structures, but looking to the centralised examples of climate change governance across Scotland's local authorities, it is clear Dundee City Council can and must do better. What that looks like is certainly not for us to dictate, but we are asking you tonight to make a commitment to looking at the examples of others and to finding a way to enhance your internal processes, so that the green recovery we all desperately need can be fully realised. In addition, while we wholeheartedly recognise many within the council stand ready to step up to the biggest challenge of all time, the science and gravity must be conveyed to all in ways that go much further than the option to do a sustainable development e-learning module. That is not enough. While you commit tonight to rolling out training for all elected officials and council officers on the ecological and climate emergency that relates directly to their roles and responsibilities, this does not need to bear a heavy financial burden. Green groups and experts are standing by, willing to help. To summarise then, we are asking for the following. First, that you appraise the proposal for a climate leadership group and assure that green groups will have a seat at that table. Second, that alongside increasing capacity for campaigning and engagement, you capitalise on the expertise of Dundee's green groups to aid with awareness raising on the ground. Third, commit to listening and engaging with the founding of the people's assemblies. Fourth, commit to developing an effective centralised governance and leadership structure to report on and oversee climate and biodiversity progress across all services. And lastly, that you roll out tailored training for all elected officials and council officers on the climate and ecological emergency. Thank you very much for your time. I know it's late. Andy and I are both happy to take any questions that anyone has. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Martha, and welcome also to Andrew as well. Apologies for missing you in the introduction there. Can I just say thank you very much for that contribution? It was really valuable and you made a number of really important points. And just to give you that assurance, in terms of section 7.3 of the report in front of us, it specifically references the inclusion of environmental groups. I think that's absolutely paramount in how we take that forward. There's also reference to 8.3 in terms of looking out with for additional support and additional contributions from city partners. And I think environmental groups are included in that, certainly in terms of the approach that we're taking with the Climate Change Board. So that expertise, that knowledge, that support is very much welcome. Also really welcome the news on the climate assemblies. I think that's fantastic. It's a real grassroots kind of focus there and the contributions that are going to be made from that, I'm sure will be really valuable. So with all that said, thank you again. And I'll just ask my colleagues if they have any questions. Councillor Mara first. Councillor Mara. You appear to be on mute.
Thanks, convener. I think the computer's struggling. Three hours and 20 minutes in, so it's slowing down a little bit. Thanks very much, Martha, for your deputation. I was particularly struck and I'll have a question for officers afterwards regarding your reflections on the internal processes of the council. We looked at a report earlier tonight on the best value audit, which is a process Scotland have undertaken. You may have been there for the start of the meeting. I'm not sure if you've willed your way through the full three hours and 20 minutes so far. But they, clearly delivering against these big challenges, unsurprisingly, is a real challenge for the council, where it has to engage with other external partners, but also has to bring the full weight of all the departments to try and deliver against that. And I would say that it's not particularly alien to public bodies to be in that situation. I remember well when I worked as a lobbyist for Stock Climate Chaos Scotland, we had significant concerns about the way the Scottish government operated in terms of the siloed approaches in different departments, when in actual fact it needed a whole government approach to actually deliver change.
Question for the deputation.
Yes, I do. I do have a question. A long preamble, sorry, convener. So my question was, you mentioned other local authorities who do this better. Can you tell us who they are?
Absolutely. And I sent an email to everyone prior to this deputation, which references specific reports that you can get more information from. But for example, if we look to Edinburgh City Council, who after a recent audit, they have created a Policy and Sustainability Committee, which provides leadership for a significant programme of corporate-led activity. They also have a Sustainability All-Party Oversight Group and a Sustainability Programme Board. And much like us as well, they have a Sustainability Champion. If you look to Glasgow, Glasgow has an Environment Sustainability and Carbon Reduction City Policy Committee, which means there's a formal reporting process. There's a Carbon Management Board. They also have City Energy, Resilience and Sustainability Group, which provides overarching scrutiny and governance for sustainability, resilience and city energy matters for officers on all levels. So there's lots of examples out there which we can draw from. And hopefully that answers your question.
As you're used to, I'll speak to officers. Thank you, convener.
Thank you. And just again, I did email you back today, Martha, to extend that offer, because I would really welcome the opportunity to sit down and have a further discussion and to give some reassurance that I have been in contact with my counterparts in Glasgow and Edinburgh as well to gain their insight and see what they're doing as well. So I think we're always learning and if there's great ideas happening elsewhere, we're always happy to pinch them as well. You don't always have to reinvent the wheel. Now, I can see that there's a couple of other members that want in, but not specifically in relation to the deputation. So can I thank you both for your time and hopefully I'll be able to speak to you soon. I'll now move on to the item itself. Now, councillor Mara, you did indicate that you had a question for officers. So I'll let you come back first and then I'll go to councillor McPherson before coming back to Bailey Keenan.
Appreciate it, convener. Thanks very much. I'd like to ask for the chief executive's reflections in terms of the points that have been made already, in terms of whether he feels that our internal structures, in terms of the way that we manage this challenge, are fit for the task ahead of us.
Note to speak for the chief executive, but would give some degree of assurance that I'm very much aware of some of the work that's been undertaken across departments involving specifically our environmental managers, who are working across those departments on specific issues. And we've also got to remember that when we're considering things like our buildings, the use of energy, that is centralised within one department and there's control there with city development, but very much working across services. But chief executive, can you respond to that specific point, please?
I can. And thank you for the question, councillor Mara. And I think the point that Martha Smart made is that this isn't just something for the city council, it's something for the whole city, for the city region, and of course for Scotland as a whole and beyond. It's a global challenge. So I think that although I'm well aware of the structures that are in place in Glasgow, excuse me, and in Edinburgh, and also in Aberdeen, the leader of the council also chairs the Scottish Cities Alliance and the drive to net nil-carbon work with the Scottish government. Various government agencies such as Scottish Enterprise, Skills Development Scotland, the Funding Council and so on, is another dimension of the work that we're doing. So I think structures take place at different levels, you know, locally, regionally, citywide. And I think that the paper before you today has, I think, some really good points about trying to build on those structures. I think that the challenge that we have ahead of us will be well served by the Climate Leadership Group and putting in place, and we're considering that as the paper says, a more focused in-house resource, but also making sure that we harness the expertise that exists in communities, with people like Martha, and also with other agencies across the city. I mean, maybe best illustrated by the fact that the city's carbon footprint's about £850,000 tonnes a year, the city councils is £35,000 in the context of our own, you know, boundary. So we do need to do this beyond the city council. And I think that's what this paper is essentially trying to address.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor McPherson.
Sorry, convener. Can I come back on that?
You've got a short supplementary, yes, councillor Mara.
I just feel that I do have some sympathy with the deputation. I mean, we know, for instance, in recent planning decisions that the council's undertaken, that, you know, there has been in the western gateway and also in the north east of the city, there's been recommendations to move ahead with planning without any form of public transport, without any form of connection to any sustainable heat or electricity, without any paths for people to actually walk along to get into the city centre. So I do think it's worth reflecting perhaps a little bit more seriously whether we are joining up the different departments, because these are decisions that we're locking in for the long term in terms of. So maybe it's not something we're going to resolve this evening, but I think it is something that's worthy of further consideration.
Absolutely. And I think you've heard that that's definitely going to be considered going forward. Councillor McPherson, or Bailey McPherson, should I say.
No worries. Thanks, convener, and grateful to Martha for a very good deputation, very interesting indeed. My question's really about, and she touched on the need for green groups, environmental groups to be involved in leadership group. And as you correctly say, convener, it is a commitment within 7.3 of the report. The question I've got really is around the democratic, I was going to say democratic oversight, maybe that's not quite what I mean, the democratic input into this. In other words, there are good indications as to where representation could come from on the Climate Leadership Group. But I would like some assurance from officers as to where the elected members fit into this. I think we all agree, if we've got half a brain, that the climate emergency is one of the most important issues facing the world. Probably, no. All right, there's a small matter of a pandemic at the moment. But that aside, long term, there is nothing more vital than getting to grips with the climate emergency. I think we all agree that. And I think it's vitally important that the work of the Dundee Climate Leadership Group is regularly reported and fed back to elected members. And I'd be very keen to get a commitment from officers as to how that will be achieved going forward, in terms of a formal process, that we know exactly what is being discussed at the Dundee Climate Leadership Group and how the issues that are discussed are being taken forward.
Thanks, Fraser. Yeah, I'll ask officers to comment. And obviously, the makeup may change. It may evolve over the period of time, depending on what the issues that are taken up. But I can give you some degree of assurance, I would be expecting some reporting back to committee, but also through the Dundee Partnership as an organisation of which we are all involved in one way, shape or form, and have that mechanism. But chief executive, anything you want to add?
Yes, thanks. You can hear me, convener.
We can indeed.
Little difficulties at my end, so apologies for that. So I think you've answered the question. I think that it's really important that this is driven back through democratic decision-making processes, both at the council itself and through the Dundee Partnership. But I think also, the city council's got a strong track record of having detailed discussions with all elected members on a regular basis and briefing. So I think that all of those things, I think, would be absolutely relevant as we work through towards COP26 in Glasgow next year. And the agenda between then and now is significant. And I would expect you to have officers of the council really coming back to elected members in all formal and informal as we develop our thinking and moving forward.
That's very helpful. May I just say how impressed I am with the chief executive's background. He's still got daylight. We've all been in darkness for hours. Very impressive nonetheless. But I'm grateful for the response. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll come to councillor Flynn's comment next.
Thanks, convener. Just to make a quick comment on the report, I think it's an excellent report and it's been acknowledged by the deputation. I think Martha's sure that acknowledged the fact it's a very good report. And could I highlight the fact that I look forward to section eight and going forward with regards to supporting what we actually have within the local authority at this present time. But the author of the report, convener, Brian Harris, just as mentioned in the last committee. But the author of the report, Convenor, Brian Harris, just as mentioned, the last committee has been shortlisted. I just want to bring this to the committee's attention for the Climate Action Plan Award by the Scottish Public Services Award 2020. So I think that just recognises the importance of the work and how good the work actually was in being compiled by not just Brian, but a number of other officers within the council and various departments. So I just want to bring that to the attention of the committee. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Flynn. And absolutely important to raise that point, Brian and the team, they're working incredibly hard, and as it's already been noted today, they work across the board and are a very small team doing a lot of heavy lifting, so it's very much appreciated and worth recognition, I think. I'll come to councillor Bailey Keenan, you had an amendment. Can I ask officers to please circulate that or put it on the screen?
Convenor, just to say that before long, you'll be thinking of suspending standing orders, the Labour Group is minded to vote against that, so I'd like you just to take it to the vote if that's your intention. Happy to deal with this item, but the rest of the business, we'd rather it came back to another evening.
Okay, well, we'll get to the end of this item and then I will consider what you've just said. Can I have you talk to your amendment, please?
The amendment's relatively simple. It's looking for you to also write to the UK government. I think we'd be missing a trick if we didn't try to do that, given that you've got the wrong item up. Notice that's item six, we're at item 18. It just shows we're getting a wee bit tired.
Always appreciate the heads up.
We're getting a wee bit tired towards the end of the night, but just to give you a heads up, I've got a further three amendments to play out through the meeting, so happy to stay here forever, but I'd prefer not to. However, I think the thing's self-explanatory, you're suggesting the right to the Scottish government, I'm suggesting you also write to the UK government. If there's any opportunity for money to the city, we should try everywhere to get it. And to build into the document going forward, the climate change factors including energy, energy use, travel impact, as suggested, needs to be done in relation to the best value report we've seen earlier this evening.
Okay, I'm happy to agree to that amendment, Bailey Keenan. So on the basis that there is no dissenting voices, which I'm hoping there won't be, can I take that as agreed? Okay, thank you very much. Now, councillor Keenan, you did reference the fact that we are approaching half nine, and I'm minded to agree with you not to suspend standing orders, but given we've got 15 minutes, I intend to move forward with some items on the agenda. Now, given the fact, and apologies Tracy for springing this on you, but given the fact that items 18 and 19 are directly related, my suggestion would be that we now take item 19. It doesn't make sense to consider that at a later date, given they are intrinsically linked. So I'm going to move on straight to item 19. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this report? No, I'm going to take silence as agreement, so is that agreed? Silence, okay, thank you. So Tracy, I'll go back to the agenda as numbered, so over to you.
Okay, that takes us back to item two. This is the minutes of the Pension Subcommittee and Pension Board of the ninth of December, the Personnel Appointment Subcommittee of September, October this year, and the Personnel Appeal Subcommittee of the 26th of October. These are here for information and record purposes.
Okay, that is agreed. I don't see anybody indicating otherwise.
Item three, T cities deal of forest issues sign. Again, this is submitted for information and record purposes as it was previously agreed.
Self-explanatory, so I'm taking that as, again, agreed.
Item four, humanitarian protection programme, this report is for noting.
Thanks. Again, I think it's really important not to just nod this through, it's a really important piece of work that's been undertaken by officers to assist with the relocation and support for 200 individuals from around 50 families into Dundee from various locations across the world, but predominantly Syria, and the appalling situation that they've faced and now hopefully gaining a better experience here in Dundee. I think the feedback that I've personally heard and seen has been tremendous from those individuals and their experience and the way in which services have come together to rally behind them and support them in their most difficult time in foreign lands is incredible. So this report sets up some of that excellent work, which continues as we speak. And I can see that councillor Kaddell wants to comment on this, so councillor Kaddell.
Thank you, Convenor. You took a lot of the words I was going to use out of my mouth. You probably remember visiting Mitchell Street and seeing the good work that was going on there and the positivity that was in the group that was working there along with Mohammed, who's referenced in the appendix there. And I regularly see Mohammed on the buses today, which is great to see. And I think the whole report is a timely antidote to some of the dog whistle politics that we've maybe seen too much of in the last years. So it's a welcome report, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I see no other contributions, so I shall take this item as agreed. Thank you.
That takes us on to item five, which is the Chief Social Worker, sorry, the Chief Social Work Officer Annual Report for 2019-20. This is for approval.
Now, Diane, thank you also for your patience and your stamina this evening. I'm just going to hand straight over to you to provide some context for this report, please.
Yes, thank you. I do have a speech prepared, Convenor, but I probably won't go through that this morning.
So long as it's not 10 pages, Diane.
No, that's okay. I mean, I think what I'll do is just kind of briefly say, I mean, I suppose the purpose of this report is really just to highlight both the complexity and the skill of the work that is done in social work and social care, and to remind people about our collective responsibility in relation to the people that we work with, particularly the vulnerability of the people that we work with. I would probably tell you about the kind of scale and remind you that we work with over 9,000 people every year within social care, that that includes 500 looked-after children, it includes 21,000 hours of social care. We've already talked about the importance of unpaid work today, but also things like 2,000 adult support and protection. And it probably is worth just mentioning that we do kind of work across not just our statutory services, but our third and independent sector. We currently have 227 contractual relationships with over 100 external providers working alongside us. There are a number of really positive things in the report, and I'm not going to go through those, they're there for you to see. But because of the time, I think what I'd really like to do is just to kind of talk a little bit about the staff and the good work that the staff have done. So we haven't, because the report focuses on the financial year 2019 to 2020, really touched on the COVID work that's gone on over this last year, but I think it is worth mentioning at this particular point in time, because none of the really good work that's in the report, both for last year or for this year, would be possible without the work undertaken by our social care and our social workforce. The COVID pandemic, as I say, sits outside that, but we really have to commend the response that's provided by our social work and social care services and supports. The workforce have been really critical in our collective efforts to continue essential services for those most vulnerable people in the city, and that includes things like lifeline social care and also our protection services. We identify, prevent and respond to both known risks and potential harm in some of the most challenging circumstances which have been complicated by COVID, and we've done that in a high standard of care and professionalism at all times, really focusing on protecting the safety and the wellbeing of the people that we work with. And I think we, both as the Chief Social Work Officer, but as a committee, we would want to commend our staff for the work that they have done over this last portion of the year. 2021 will continue to be a challenge for social work and social work services. It will be a series of looking at kind of issues in relation to our budget and our social demographic pressures, but doing that at a time when we will continue to work through COVID response and recovery. So we're not doing that, we're doing that alongside it. And to do that, we need to be continued to be collaborative with our stakeholders and our third and independent sector providers, and to rise to the challenges that come to us as well as continuing our improvement work in relation to public protection, care experienced children, substance use and mental health. So I do commend this report to you, I hope that you're able to approve it for us to submit that to Scottish Government as part of our responsibility. And I believe that Glenn Lloyd is still on the call, so Glenn and I would be happy to take any questions.
Thanks very much, Diane. That was very succinct, and you hit all of the relevant points, I think. It is a very good report, and obviously it'd probably been the most challenging for the service in terms of the last 10 months in particular, but I've got a few questions here, so Bailey Keenan, first of all.
Convenor, obviously I'm sorry that you, Diane, that you felt that you didn't have the time to put what you've prepared in front of us this evening. And I think, you know, the timing is an issue in relation to meetings that we need to address, and that's been discussed at leaders, and hopefully it won't happen again, and we'll be able to hear you out when you've prepared so much work to go into. However, in relation to questions, you had a number of points that were raised, I mean, it's almost a year old, the report, and there was a number of points that you raised that were getting highlighted as issues going forward. So we're now, you know, the best part of nine months into that, can you maybe go through some of the things and how they've been addressed? I know that COVID's obviously given another range of things where some of the things that were moving along quite well have not in relation to mental health and drug issues, haven't moved at the pace we would like to see them. So just obviously if you could give me some comments about the things you highlighted we need to address and some of the other things that may have went wrong, so as well have an indication of what we're looking at next year from you.
Aye, yeah, thank you, Bailey Keenan. I guess in terms of the COVID, you know, while it has delayed a number of issues, it's also progressed a number of things, because staff have had to work very inventively in order to think about how they might kind of manage some of the circumstances. So that's included everything from looking at how we support the pathways for people in and out of services and support, looking at how we make the best use of our staff in terms of supporting people who may be at risk. We know that there are challenges in terms of our demographics, and we anticipate, for example, around older people, that we will see an increase in the frailty of our older population going forward because of the impact of things like COVID. So we'll need to think about our different models and how we might actually progress some of that work going into next year. You have touched already on the Drugs Commission and the Mental Health Plan. We are starting to see things move again, and again, we will build on some of the good work that has been undertaken to try to respond to the situation we have found ourselves in, and we're starting to see that that work starting to commence. I don't know if Glenn would want to come in at this point and talk about some of the children's services stuff.
Thank you, Diane, and thank you, Bailey Keenan, for the question. I think then, within children's services and justice, there are probably two things with a caveat at the end, a third thing. Within children's services, our priority now going forwards is the independent care review, and we'll be bringing a report forward to elected members, as you know, in January, requesting approval of our plan in relation to the independent care review, and not least the five foundations of the promise. And as Diane has suggested, actually, there's a lot of work we've done within the service and with partners during the pandemic that has helped to accelerate our approach towards that, not least in relation to the work we've carried out with third sector on flexible family support. So we'll continue that over the next six, 12, 24 months. And then within justice, as I've just said, in relation to the report on community payback orders, the focus will be on whole systems approaches, so that we sustain the focus on unpaid work, we sustain the focus on supervision, but we also work with partners in relation to earlier interventions for people appearing in court, and we work with the Scottish Prison Service in particular to support short and long-term prisoners on their release from prison sentences. The caveat is that in relation to both the independent care review and justice is the financial climate, so obviously that places a growing emphasis on us to work in partnership with stakeholders, not least communities themselves. And again, as you've heard in earlier reports, not before this committee, but before previous committees, we're doing that through the What Matters To You Programme, for instance, and will increasingly do it as well in relation to children that are currently looked after or care experienced. So independent care review, justice, both within a difficult financial climate.
Thank you both for those responses, really helpful. Councillor Mara?
Thanks, Convenor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, it's the computer again. Yeah, and I have a question, it's similar in a way to some that Kevin asked at Bailey Keenan on issues of demand. We heard quite a lot at the start of lockdown regarding potential issues of children being at risk, and we were talking, there was a lot of talk about putting in place a trauma-informed response through our education service. I wonder whether you could reflect in terms of whether you are, what impact you are seeing so far in terms of children and issues of harm, neglect, abuse, and how we can deal with those, and whether actually you have the appropriate resource to deal with any upturn in those kind of demands on the service. I have a second question, if that's okay, Convenor, but if you have this one first.
Thanks. Glenn?
Again, thank you for the question, councillor Mara. Social work and referrals to social work, our mash and intake teams during the pandemic, referral rates have actually been broadly similar to the equivalent period last year, albeit with some slight differences in relation to the reasons for referrals. So we heard early, for instance, that domestic abuse is relatively high in Dundee, and there's been a higher proportion of referrals that involved domestic abuse. There've also been a higher proportion of referrals that have involved mental health issues, with parents struggling during the pandemic and the pandemic compounding the difficulties that they might ordinarily have experienced. So very similar number of referrals, but some slight nuances in relation to the reasons for those referrals. The proportion of those referrals that have resulted in social work involvement, for instance, through children and people on the Child Protection Register, children and people who become looked after, children who are taken away from their families through CPOs, child protection officers, has again been broadly the same as the equivalent period last year. And what that tells us is, I think, that actually, despite the many challenges of the pandemic, we've adapted services, we've responded, and people have continued to report in a similar way that they did, as I say, over the equivalent period last year. The bigger concern, in a way, is in relation to those families where there are still concerns, there are still issues, but they're not quite hitting thresholds in relation to the children being at risk of significant harm. So there may well be issues within the family and they may well need support, but it doesn't warrant statutory social work intervention. So going forwards, as again we've heard in previous reports, what we are doing is working with the third sector, working with schools, working now increasingly with health and social care to develop improved preventative responses to that. So we have the What Matters To You initiative, we have the CELCIS initiative, we have 365 Schools, we have a growing focus on integrated support to both parents and children within the same family from all of the different agencies that are involved with them at any given time. So I think that's the emphasis that we need to have on going forwards, and within that, a conversation on thresholds, actually where do social work services need to get involved, where do we start and finish? And within that, a conversation as well on capacity implications, whether that's for social work or whether it's for the rest of the partnership in terms of the third sector, health and schools.
Thanks, Glenn. Michael, I'm going to come back to you, I'm conscious that we are into extra time and I heard what councillor Keenan said. However, I do have a proposal for members, which is that we agree to suspend standing orders in order to finish this item, and so you can ask a further question, and also consider item 20, given that it is specifically in relation to concluding the insurance claim with regards to Baldragan Academy. And then at that point, we would conclude the meeting and reconvene for a special PNR on the 7th of December to hear the outstanding items. So unless anyone is otherwise minded, can I have agreement on that basis that we finish this item, consider item 12, and then conclude committee at that point? Bailey McPherson, you've got a point, thanks, councillor Keenan.
Yeah, I simply want to make the point, I agree with you, councillor Alexander, I think that's a sensible compromise. Councillor Duncan, I'd already agreed we would vote against councillor Keenan's proposal to not suspend, because we did discuss at group leaders on Friday, the issue that I raised with you all, the other group leaders back in September, about the need, in our view, the solution is to strip PNR out of the night where there are other committees. That's our personal view. We know there are other views on how we deal with this, but going on till 11 o'clock at night is absolutely not acceptable for two reasons. One, the length of the meeting, but also the time it takes in a short period, particularly for opposition councillors who don't have earlier sight of papers, to be able to read everything and assimilate it. I like to read from cover to cover, as I'm sure all my colleagues do as well. So I think your proposal is sensible, but the substantive issue here is that we ensure that there is but the substantive issue here is that we ensure that there is a solution for 2021 of ensuring that we do not have P and R on the same night as the other committees. There's substantive issues in here, and we shouldn't be racing through an agenda simply because it's half past 10 at night. But I'm grateful for your very sensible suggestion, councillor Alexander.
Thank you very much for that contribution. So with all that said, we will continue on the basis of that agreement. So councillor Mara, you had a second part to your question. Please continue.
Thanks, convener. Yeah, so I think just your points, Glenn, around mental health are well made. And I think it may be worth for elected members reflect it in terms of the kind of resources required and again, the pace of change issue within the mental health services. My second question relates to actually arrangements for social work and working from home and the physical location of social workers. I know that obviously we have a dedicated staff and other elected members have referenced them already, but people who perhaps are working from home, dealing with very sensitive issues, and when we can expect to see more of our members of staff back in their places of work, where they can better deal with those and work with colleagues in a collaborative way appropriately. I just wouldn't want to see us going down kind of lines of thinking that there might be more working from home and deficiencies, when in actual fact, I think in very sensitive departments, such as the one that you obviously run so diligently, that we would want to see these issues treated appropriately. So just your reflections on that, given this is an annual report and we're talking about these issues.
Yes, thank you, councillor Mara. Obviously, our social work staff are working from home. They're working from home with a range of options around equipment, et cetera. And we're part of the discussions that are happening at Dundee City Council level around the use of accommodation as we go forward. We are looking at the business case and the needs of the service. And I think the latest tier three has resulted in us having to take a step back again from that until we work through what that actually means. We ensure that the staff are able to engage with service users, so they have full access to things like PPE, the proper and appropriate risk assessments. And actually, the majority of social care and social work care workforce are staff who are delivering frontline services. The social workers are a smaller element of that, and those are the ones who are generally working from home. And we're exploring a range of options. So we, in the Health and Social Care Partnership, are also looking at the use of our health properties to make sure that we have that access. At this stage, there's not been a decision to reopen Cleverhouse, which is our main headquarters in terms of the Health and Social Care Partnership, but we are looking at a flexible use of the whole of the city council's resources.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for those questions. And Michael, I see no other contributions at this point. So I'm going to take that as agreed, unless somebody tells me otherwise. Thank you. As I said, we'll just take item 20 at this point. And it's self-explanatory. So does anybody have any particular questions on this? No? Okay, I'm going to again, oh, sorry. Michael, is that you wanting then? I saw you waving at the camera briefly. Yes, right. If you can unmute, it might take 10 seconds, but. Question better be worth waiting for. There we go.
Hello, sorry, sorry about that, bloody computer. Yeah, I don't think, I don't have a problem with the proposals here. I don't think the Labour Group has a problem with it. I suppose I'm finding this process though around the joint campus and putting in place to be quite confusing. And I suppose my question is, when will we see a business case for this new school? Detailing what's going to be in it, how much it's going to cost. We've got a one line commitment in the capital plan. We have had difficulty with the Education Scotland consultation on the closure of the two schools. But I don't think councillors yet to see a business case that actually makes sense. Whereas it may not be pertinent, as you might see, to whether we approve the insurance request in this or not. I think in terms of the governance of the process, I would want to see the kind of business case that's been proposed in the best value review brought forward, so that councillors can actually evaluate what it is we're being asked to do. So a timetable for that, please.
No, thanks very much. Officers can come back to you after the meeting for this. It's not, you're right in what you say in terms of just wanting clarity over that process. That's perfectly reasonable question. But this is not the report that we are considering tonight. So I'm going to ask officers to come back to you after the meeting with that, because it isn't directly relevant to this item that is before us right now. But officers can respond to you after the meeting. Margaret, do you have a question in relation to the item before us?
Yes, thanks, convener. So in relation to 4.3, from memory, the further work in terms of the joint project was to do with going back out and consulting with the people in, the pupils, the schools and the parents and things in terms of that school. And I was just wondering, has it come back and been agreed that we are going ahead with a joint school, or is Brave View not to be rebuilt?
So not to repeat myself, but that's not related to this item that's before us today, which is specifically in relation to the insurance claim. However, clearly after the consultation, a consultation report will come back to committee for consideration. It hasn't yet come back for consideration. And that will, I'm sure, be coming in due course. And officers can offer some insight to that, perhaps out with the meeting, and provide you with some information on that.
Okay, could I just ask then, is the 6 million, is that just part of the claim then in relation to the damage to Brave View? It's not including like the claim to rebuild Brave View? There hasn't been a claim for that?
There's only one claim, but I'll let officers come in on that point. I don't know who wants to take it, whether it's Greg or Paul, both of which I believe are on the call.
The claim is to settle the insurance and not to rebuild. So it's a settlement claim to not rebuild the school. That's essentially what the 6 million is. It's the settled claim. The school would then not be rebuilt. That's what the report sets out.
Sorry, from my memory, that was never agreed that we wouldn't be rebuilding the school. I mean, 4.3 quite clearly says that you were going to bring a port back to us with all the options, including the fully costed model, to tell us which options would be best. There was also to be further consultation with the pupils and the staff and the parents from those areas. So has a decision already been made by officers that clearly is to accept this claim and not rebuild Brave View?
I think the report sets out that the decision that we're asking for tonight to settle the insurance doesn't actually mean that a new campus school would go ahead. That's still a decision that will have to be made by members. But I think what the report is saying, that the old Brave View would not be rebuilt. And so the option that that will come to is that there's either a campus school, which is a Brave View free demerger, or we would be looking to put up a Brave View. That's what the report's setting out.
Okay, with those questions now asked, there's no other contributions at this point. Can I ask for agreement on that basis? I see no dissenting voices. Okay, thank you very much. So as I said, that is the business for this evening. We can re, we shall reconvene following the committee meetings, which are due to take place on the evening of the 7th. And P and R will follow thereafter. Thank you all very much and have a good evening.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, thanks.